We will call into session the meeting for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for December 18th, 2018, and we will ask Mr. Burton as to please lead us in the salute to the flag.
Thank you. Please join me. By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Okay, and with that, we will ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Marcia Burke Bigler, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Kitty Jung.
President.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Von Hartung is absent. Jeannie Herman. Oh, you're here. Oh, welcome. I'm sorry, I didn't notice you came in. Von Hartung.
Evil twin here.
Thank you. Jeannie Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slater.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Leporelli.
Here.
I am Nancy Ferentz, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, number three.
Item three is an appearance. This is Rick Warner, Washoe County Community Services, and Krishna Pagila with the Nevada Water Innovation Institute at University of Nevada, in a presentation discussion regarding ongoing activities pertaining to the regional reclaimed water feasibility study.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, this is Rick Warner. Introduced, I'm a senior engineer here at Washoe County. Joining me today is also Dr. Pagila and John Enlow from the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. Today is really intended to provide you a brief oversight into a lot of the activities that the region is taking on looking at some advanced water feasibility study for how we manage reclaimed water in the region. This is a joint effort. You see the logos of our regional partners down below, City of Sparks, Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Regional Water Planning, and the City of Sparks have all come together. At the very top, there's a tagline called "One Water Nevada." The regional entities formed up the name "One Water" to really capture all the activities that are being conducted to explore different ways that we use reclaimed water in this region. I emphasize that a feasibility study is an exploration. We're out to evaluate future options. So, we're very proud that the agencies have come together to look at really how to manage things in the future, more visionary work, not so much how we do things in the present. So, I have a PowerPoint that will guide us through some of the discussions. Today's agenda really is, I want to talk briefly about the current uses of reclaimed water, how we currently recycle water within the region, and talk about some of our future activities. Again, this branding of "One Water Nevada," and also very briefly talk about the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which is a collaboration formed at the University of Nevada Reno to help us in these investigations. Okay, so, how do we use water today? Water recycling actually makes up a fair amount of our current regional water supply, about 10% of our regional supplies supplied through water reclamation from the five regional wastewater facilities, and it's highly regulated by the state of Nevada presently. And I'm sure if you've been to golf courses, parks, recreation, or ball fields, you've noticed signs that said "water recycling in play," and we've had decades of experience safely using reclaimed water for non-drinking water purposes, predominantly surface water irrigation for parks and ball fields. This water use for reclaimed water is regulated by the state. For decades, the state has regulated categories A through E, just kind of nomenclature for the quality of water. Predominantly in this region, we use category A, which is water that's very safe for a human contact, if you're at a ball field or golf course and kids running around. That's a safe use for non-drinking water purposes. In 2016, really under the support then of Governor Sandoval's 2015 drought forum, the state came together and formed up experts to think about how we could investigate other options to use reclaimed water in more purposes. After two years of investigation, the state formed a category A-plus. I think we all know what A-plus means. It's exceptional. And this would be reclaimed water, again, that's sourced from the regional water reclamation facilities but has undergone advanced treatment to meet drinking water standards. These types of programs are predominant in the U.S., mostly in the arid southwest. Those small blue dots represent communities that have these type of A-plus or advanced water reclamation projects that take reclaimed water all the way to drinking water standards and use it for drinking water, predominantly for groundwater storage and banking, long-term uses. Sometimes communities look at water banking for water security for the future. Often, communities like Southern California, they'll have very expensive water importation projects. Once they get the water, it's highly valuable. They find different ways to recycle the water, make sure they maximize the value. Those larger blue water drops are where our regional partners and staff have all visited to understand more directly how other communities have investigated A-plus type water programs. Couple of quick examples, and I want to get to Dr. Pagila to give a little bit of briefing about exactly where we are today in our evaluation. Silicon Valley has operated a demonstration project for almost two years. They use it for public education predominantly. We've investigated many, many programs around the U.S., and I told you earlier that we've visited many of these. We found that when communities go down this pathway to investigate these type of programs, there's cornerstones, not just the technology that's needed, but the community themselves has taken on different attributes. They've gained trust of the public. They've created expertise within their staff. And a couple of other key attributes is, they've taken the time to really do due diligence in a feasibility study and engage with the regional water authority leadership. These are paramount things that if a community like ours goes down a pathway of investigating future options, that we have to keep mindful too. It's not just technology, it's about the way we approach projects. So, back to our regional feasibility study that I mentioned at the very top. Our purpose is really to determine if this new category, A-plus water, that was established by the state of Nevada, would offer this region any beneficial opportunities to manage water even better. I would say "better" because the programs we have in place are extraordinary. The key questions are always around, does it offer social, economic, environmental benefits? Is A-plus, can it be safely produced, sustainable in its supply, and can it be reliably used for our purposes? Then that third bullet is really key, is because the state regulations mandate that the water must be stored in groundwater aquifers, we got to make sure that those underground aquifers can accept water in the future as well for storage and banking. Broadly, this is sort of our categories that we're investigating. We're looking at regulations, community outreach, so forth. I want to introduce now Krishna Pagila. He's a program director at the University of Nevada Reno. He's a long-term colleague, and his team is going to talk very briefly about how they're examining sort of the technology evaluations and sort of the social and economic benefits.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, Chairman Burke Bigler and Commissioners. I'm glad to be here. For the record, I'm Krishna Pagila, professor at the University of Nevada Reno. Couple of things that I want to talk about in these next two slides is that your leadership has provided tremendous energy in the leadership force that you envision for the county in dealing with water issues. So, with the support you've provided and the leadership of the county, we've been able to establish capacity where we can look at some of these advanced water reclamation technologies that will allow us to produce category A-plus water and stir it in the ground if we intend to do so in the future. So, in the specific feasibility study, we are looking at multiple issues, but more importantly, we are building capacity in terms of the students that we are educating. In this particular project, we have three students dedicated for this feasibility study, and it brings us the ability to do the work which we can use to do other work. I want to focus specifically on two areas what we are doing is that, one, at the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, we are researching advanced water reclamation technologies that will allow us to produce this A-plus water, as well as at Cold Springs, where we are looking at a different strategy, taking advantage of the existing infrastructure there, where we can produce advanced category A-water and put it through the soil aquifer for further treatment so that it becomes category A-plus by the time it reaches the groundwater. So, both of these strategies are complementary, and we are looking at them depending upon where we would like to implement or where the groundwater is compatible with the quality of the water we produce. So, it's, these two projects are really specifically in that there are multiple investigations that are taking place, complementary to these A-plus investigations. I'm going to let Rick Warner talk about it. Once again, I'll thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you, Krishna. So, I want to wrap up in our remaining couple of minutes here, just to give you a very high overview of what are our current activities. Krishna mentioned in the previous slide, we do have sort of technology evaluations for treatment right at our local facility. So, this feasibility study just isn't a sort of a desktop exercise that we're actually getting out and doing some explorations out in the community. Our groundwater, that third big question of our feasibility study is, if we ever went down a pathway producing A-plus water, would there be viable places to store water? So, we're actually with the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, making leadership there, investigating American Flat Road and Bedell Flat for groundwater augmentation. These regional collaborations, again, these regional partners have all come together. It's very exciting, but we also have some grand opportunities. And I want to mention specifically grants that the county has supported with the Bureau of Reclamation, the Water Research Foundation, National Science Foundation. We're very pleased with Dr. Pagila's leadership that many times we can leverage our local money on these national research foundations and help even broaden our studies as well. The county's leadership, particularly with David Solero and Duane Smith, have been very supportive from the county side to make sure that we have the resources needed to do these very technologically advanced investigations. With Dr. Pagila's leadership at UNR, they have a very independent arm, of course, for research, but we've also brought international experts as well to help us form up the work. Just wrapping up very quickly, if I can, Krishna talked about the technical work. This feasibility study should end in 2020. The community elements are very important, not just the technology evaluations. We want to make sure we're out in the community, offering field trips and investigations and bringing in school kids and so forth. Other groups, the TMAO Board and the Western Regional Planning Commission Board have thought about doing community field trips to maybe to some Orange County or Silicon Valley, which sounds very promising, to actually get in the facilities themselves. Again, "One Water Nevada," our takeaway is, when you see this sort of brand that you recognize, it's the regional partners coming together to look at very futuristic ways to sustainably plan for our water future, including these A-plus evaluations. This week, we'll get you, this is actually a four-page brochure, we're going to get to each and every one of you. And if you have any questions, these are the principal contacts for the One Water Initiative, myself, John Enlow, Krishna Pagila. And I'll just say, lastly, Dr. Pagila has taken all of this and formed around the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, where, again, the regional partners sort of invest in the university that can help us explore big options and future opportunities. So, we're very proud of not only that effort, but your contribution and support toward the university and helping us sort of solve big water management problems in the future. I think Mr. Smith would like to say so.
Thank you, Rick. I just wanted to steal a moment. Good morning, Duane Smith, for the record. I just wanted to briefly comment on the importance of the great work that these two individuals sitting behind me, as well as others in the region, are doing to further water management in our area. You know, our region has potable water, stormwater, effluent wastewater needs and challenges, but with people like Krishna and with Rick, and certainly other leaders like John Enlow, who have been really taking the lead on bringing this through our community, we're responding to those challenges, and that response is developing the long-term strategies and needs that continue to benefit our community both now and as we move into the future. You've just heard in this brief presentation a little bit about some of those specific things. So, I wanted to thank you, the board, you know, for your continued support, what you've done, helping further these efforts, and certainly that support as we move into the future as well. And as requested at the last board meeting, staff will be coming with a more thorough report on wastewater capacity issues and some of those things. But I just wanted to briefly mention that Rick will not be making that presentation in February. Rick has been serving the community here on water management issues for the last 32 years. He started at the City of Sparks and transitioned to Washoe County. And in that time, he's been solely focused on the needs of the community, on water needs, and how to make the best decisions as we've moved forward. So, we're fortunate to have had him, but we're not going to lose Rick. He is going to stay in our community. He's going to be working with Dr. Pagila through Krishna, through the institute at the university as we continue to move forward. You know, his water leadership is recognized in the community, and I think this is, as he transitions from a Washoe County employee to a regional leader in water, I think this is something that's going to continue to really bring us, the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, TMAO, NDOT, very much value. So, just, Rick, I just wanted to thank you, you know, certainly for your support through the years at Washoe County and all the things that you've done, and I look forward to your continued support as we move into the future. Thank you for giving me just a moment to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and we will be regretfully losing you, Mr. Warner, but not losing you at the same time, but very much looking forward to this whole project going on. It's interesting and kind of exciting for our community that we can find ways to better use our water and, you know, make sure that it's good and clean and perfect for everybody to use. Commissioner Hartung, I know you love this topic, so...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Pagila and Mr. Warner, Mr. Enlow, Mr. Smith, I'm just, Ms. Perry, haven't forgotten you either. And by the way, she'll be stepping in, I hope, to Mr. Warner's spot and keep us on I hope to keep this up, keep up the momentum that we have right now. We have great momentum. What this really does for us, just as you've heard me say 100 times, this takes effluent from the liability side of our asset sheet and turns it into an asset, or our balance sheet, and turns it into an asset. And it just is so important. I'm looking forward to seeing the feasibility studies, reading those, trying to understand where and how and when we can store water. This is just a game changer for Northern Nevada, and we could not do it without the quality, without the caliber of gentlemen that we have here. Again, Dr. Pagila, Mr. Warner, Mr. Enlow, working directly with Western Regional Water, the Western Regional Water Planning Commission, and of course, TMAO. So, thank you so much, Rick. We'll miss you. I'll miss having you just down the hall, but I know that you'll be close by. Madam Chair, if you would indulge me, may we take a photograph with these?
Certainly.
Because Mr. Warner is leaving, and I think that that's important for us. He'll be sorely missed.
I think that's a good idea. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
The real reason for this is pictures.
I have to memorialize your departure. You know, you always got to put a photo. That's a really smart guy. It really makes it look better.
You want us to smile?
This side, that side?
Yeah.
But like, absolutely.
Next to this?
Well, I never got any shots about that.
We got to have this suited.
All right.
There you go.
Okay, three, two.
Oh, come on, just leave your arm in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great presentation and the good information for all of us. Mr. Manager, we'll move on to number four.
Item four is certificates of appreciation to acknowledge the dedication and services provided to the domestic violence court, especially the Court of the Reno Justice Court. And we have the Honorable Patricia Lynch with Reno Justice Court here to present this item.
Good morning, Your Honor. How are you?
Good morning. This is a little deja vu, although you've really changed the chamber since I was here last, so it's a little more secure. I am so pleased today to be here with you. Joe, please. We have reluctant people here. Chair Burke Bigler and fellow Commissioners, I am so pleased and honored to be here today to present certificates to members of the community, a nonprofit organization, an individual, and a county agency who have enabled the Reno Justice Court to have a domestic violence program. And I also want to thank the county because you folks supported me back in 2016 when I put in a grant for Violence Against Women Act funding and was able to secure staffing so that we could start the court. And we got that grant and we hired Naomi Johns, sorry, who, I hit my head last week, so I have a little, I'm okay, but...
Oh, good.
Yeah, no, it was like, you know, CAT scan, the whole thing, but I'm okay. Anyway, so, Ms. Johns is now a full-time employee of the court, I'm pleased to announce, and she staffs the DV Court and also the DUI Court. So, I want to thank you folks because you kind of helped me get the ball rolling there. Briefly, I think you all are aware, and hopefully now people are aware, of what devastation is caused by domestic violence in our community, and unfortunately, Nevada is one of the leaders, you know, in the nation in deaths of people, and that's a horrible thing. And it's an issue, domestic violence is an issue of power and control, and it comes about, it's a pattern, and it results in violence. That can be the last thing, but it can be verbal abuse, emotional abuse, isolation, economic abuse, all of these things. And most of the people who have appeared in my court grew up in violent homes. This is what they know, and so it's learned behavior, but it can be unlearned. But there are additional issues. It can be made worse by substance abuse and mental health issues. So, my challenge in putting this court together was, I know the domestic violence piece and the Batters intervention programs, and they have to go to those programs, but I didn't have the expertise in substance abuse or mental health issues. And that's where Ridge House came in, and Ridge House has been absolutely wonderful. Ridge House was founded in 1982, I believe, to help prisoners reenter into society, and they offer an incredible amount of resources to our community. So, from the very beginning, Ridge House has come into my court, they appear at every hearing, they provide numerous substance abuse and mental health evaluations, they provide free counseling, this is all free, free counseling, they help people get their Medicaid. I have people, some of my defendants who are in jail say, "Well, now, how do I get into Ridge House, or how do I get that, can I get that packet?" Because, you know, somebody told me, "You're on jail.com." They know who you are now. So, but that's a good thing. And so, I would like to, right now, I would like to introduce the folks from Ridge House. And I have Denise Everett, where are you, Denise? Oh, right behind me. Denise Everett is the executive director of Ridge House. I have Dr. Juanita Chapman, who does the evaluations and just does a fabulous job. And unfortunately, over the years, I've had a lot of time, I've read a lot of evaluations, and hers are very thorough and very helpful. Some of them are kind of rushed, but yours are not, and these are complex issues that we are dealing with. We also have Ginny Dillon, who was one of the original people in our court. So, what happens is, I have, basically, I have DAS and I have the Ridge House person, and the person comes up and we check on if they've been going to their classes, if they're doing their substance abuse counseling, if they're doing, you know, if they have mental health, what's going on with their issues. And the people in court with me essentially are Ms. John, Annie Fabian, who I'll get to later, and right now, it's Uriel Gonzalez, but originally, it was Ginny Chapman, so I want to thank you for your help. We also have Susie Leonard, who I understand will be attending today for the first time, so it's going to be inaugural for her. And then, of course, Uriel Gonzalez is wonderful and sits in the court and helps. And I get recommendations from them as to what, you know, what we should do, you know, with different folks. So, Denise, if you would please come forward on behalf of Ridge House, or on behalf of the Reno Justice Court, I want to give you this certificate in recognition of outstanding dedication and service to the domestic violence court of the Reno Justice Court. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Judge Lynch, and, you know, we deal with a lot of specialty courts, and we are especially delighted to work with you because you're so understanding about the issues, and you listen and you have, you know, the sort of appropriate response from the bench that really helps us further what we do with working with our clients. So, we really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's always nice to hear. We don't often get much praise as judges, let me tell you. Okay, the, another certificate that I want to award is to DAS, and we have Director Ingram here, and Chief Ingram, excuse me, and Annie Fabian, and almost all of these folks are under DAS supervision. So, that means they've got to go drug test, you know, they've got to, you know, all these different things. And we have some real interesting interaction with them sometimes, but Annie has just got the right personality. She's really great, she's not too hard, but on the other hand, we're not letting them, you know, manipulate us and everything. And so, we also coordinate if people, because, believe it or not, some of these folks have felony cases and they're on parole or they're on probation. So, we coordinate with those providers so that we don't, you know, they don't have to report in twice or anything, and Annie makes all that happen and everything. And so, I would like to, on behalf, Annie, if you would come up, Joe, I would like to offer you this certificate of appreciation in recognition of outstanding dedication and service to the domestic violence court of Reno Justice Court.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Judge Lynch, I'd like to thank you on behalf of alternative sentencing, and, you know, we do the things we do because of the people we have. Our team, I've said this multiple times, our team is the best. You know, we access the resources, and Annie's the best person to assist them through their, either their recovery, their substance abuse recovery, or their mental health issues and their domestic battery counseling. So, I couldn't be prouder of her. She does a phenomenal job for us, and we need about 20 more like her.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I don't believe Kelly Veloria was able to make it today, and it was a little last-minute notice, but she is an attorney in our community, and she volunteers her time as a pro tem judge if I'm not able to be there. And so, that's important because we don't have to cancel the court, we can have her there. And so, I will give her her certificate later. We have, since we've started, we've had about 1,778 hearings, and just this year, we've had 718 hearings with 55 defendants. That may not sound like a lot, but those are, these are really complicated defendants that have a lot going on, and if we can break that cycle of violence, it is well worth, you know, the effort that we put into them. So, I did not want to, as you know, I am retiring January 7th, I decided not to run again, and I did not want to let, I did not want to leave without making sure that the community knew what a wonderful resource these folks are and how much they have contributed to the safety of our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
notice, but she is an attorney in our community, and she volunteers her time as a pro temp judge if I'm not able to be there. And so that's important because we don't have to cancel the court, we can have her there. And so I will give her her certificate later. We have, since we've started, we've had about 1,778 hearings, and just this year, we've had 718 hearings with 55 defendants. That may not sound like a lot, but those are, these are really complicated defendants that have a lot going on, and if we can break that cycle of violence, it is well worth, you know, the effort that we put into them. So I did not want to, as you know, I am retiring January 7th, I decided not to run again, and I did not want to let, I did not want to leave without making sure that the community knew what a wonderful resource these folks are and how much they have contributed to the safety of our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor, and we really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And we thank all of the rest of you for all that you do. What you do is so important, and you deal with a really tough group of people with a lot of tough problems to resolve, and we appreciate your help and your kindness and everything you do for all those people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manager, I believe we go to public comment now.
Item five is public comment. Comment under this item is limited to three minutes per person, it may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commissioner will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments will be made to the commission as a whole.
I am not seeing public comment list, and I know there are people here who would like to speak. Something's wrong on my computer, so if someone could come and figure out why? And in the meantime, Madam Clerk, if you will call.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Ms. Catherine Snedeker, followed by Mr. Wesley Griffin.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. As you're aware, on November 27th, I filed a complaint with this commission about your fuel tax and about this bar. And I would like to thank Mr. Liparelli for getting back to me. He chose one, on the fuel tax, he chose one out of 16 items I had on there to respond to. And his point was that the money was not used or not put in the general fund, but it was used to pay debts. That means it went to the general fund. Because if it was actually road maintenance and new projects, that's what he would have said. So since he didn't answer the other 15 things about how it needed to be voted on by the voters and things like that, he's in agreement with me because he didn't address it. And we all know that a remaining silent is an agreement. That's why you always like to say, for the people that don't show up for certain items, the silent majority is with us. That's because they didn't show up to challenge you. And so he didn't challenge me on any of those things that I asked in the fuel tax. This thing here is bogus. It is 100% bogus. This is not for your safety. Not one bit is it for your safety. You know how I know that? You just had a big picture taken right here. And where's your little security guy that may be able to save somebody coming up to get you? He's leaning against a wall, and you're all over here. How's he going to save you? Hmm, he's not, is he? So this is a bar, as if it were a courtroom. If you were really concerned about the safety of yourselves, there'd be Plexiglas going from there to the ceiling. There wouldn't be this stupid thing here with gates for entry and exit going into the bar and coming out of the bar. Now, Mr. Liparelli said, "Oh, that doesn't stop you from coming up and making a comment." And you're right, it doesn't. Doesn't stop anybody. But it does give you the option, under your Mason Legislative Rules, to not hear us, to absolutely ignore everything that is said at this podium to you, because we are outside the bar, just like in a courtroom. If you're sitting in the audience in a courtroom, there's this bar there. They don't recognize anything you say until you go into the bar. So I will be doing a notice of non-response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Wesley Griffin. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Here I am again, here we are again, can't seem to get rid of us. We're here to talk about Save Wild Creek again. We kind of look at this as if, you know, have you ever made a mistake and found yourself driving down the wrong way on a one-way street? Ever found yourself going down the freeway, maybe running a little late, you look down at the speedometer, and maybe you're doing 75 or 80 miles an hour, and you think, wow, you know? These are all things that all of us can do. When we do it, I might ask you, what is the, what should you do? Should you just continue down the one-way street going the wrong way? Should you reduce your speed? Should you take a look at things? And that's the way we feel about Wild Creek. We feel like things need to be looked at, things need to be reviewed. We have a beautiful open space, green space, public recreation center here that is in jeopardy. Moving a school in there could actually ruin that space. And what would it cost the citizens of Washoe County to replace it? $30 million, $40 million? Would it ever even be replaced? I might point out to you that the citizens of our community did not know that this was going to happen until it was kind of presented as a done deal. They came in with an agreement with several public bodies here to agree that this, that they were going to investigate that, and the citizens didn't even hear about it. Now, they may tell you that it was, you know, made public and presented so that everybody should have known, but people on the RSCVA, certain members of the RSCVA was unaware of it. So it was something that was kind of sprung on us. We had no chance to even oppose it in the beginning. Is that the way we like to run our government, is to have actual parts of our government that go around bullying and taking advantage of other citizens? I would, I don't think so. And I would hope that you would at least take a look and realize that this is a public treasure. Been in our community for 40 years. We need it. We had a Gulf Town Hall meeting here a while back, in fact, it was this time last year, and the overwhelming opinion of our Gulf community is that we need it. So let's turn around and get headed the right direction on that one-way street. Let's save Wild Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next is Ms. Tammy Holdstil.
Good morning. Good morning. Tammy Holdstil, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And now to the serious stuff. I know my words are like water off of a duck's back, but I'm going to get it on the record that it's time for Washoe County to start looking at how they can change their rulings, do their policies and procedures. A good example is, at another meeting, the chair stated that you have a commissioner who is very knowledgeable when it comes to the rules and the regulations. I think you should be using her, because you don't. She knows what she's saying. I can tell you right now, Prado Ranch South, which is coming up before of the city tomorrow, I'd say it's got a very good chance of falling flat. And in that process, part of that Prado North hinges on Prado South going through for the flood mitigation. So it's going to be time for Washoe County Commissioners to look at how they voted and how you can reverse your vote, because you're going to flood residents when that project goes through and starts doing its job without having all of the things that end line like it's supposed to for flood mitigation. And it'll be on you, not us, you. Because when that hearing happened, you did not argue the merits of the case for the findings. You only sat there and dickered back and forth about trying to get it elevated, and it's a win-win because it was just elevating Lemon Drive, didn't worry about anything else regarding being in a flood plain or any of that other stuff. So now, you have a problem on your hands, and you need to learn how to fix it. You have affected the citizens out there, and it will affect the citizens in the future. It is on the record now, so if the citizens have to go back and get some type of recovery because of your malice, it can happen. And that's why it's on the record today. Good day and have a nice day. Oh, by the way, number 14, doing rules, that you can change rules without doing the rules you do to begin with, to make this big circle and avoid doing what's by NRS, because you obviously didn't file NRS for tentative maps, which has been a normal thing that you should be doing. If you violate statute, you get in trouble with the law. Well, you guys have been violating statute, your staff has been violating statute, and it's time for you to get in trouble with the law and start following the law instead of circumventing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Kathleen Shoup.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Kathleen Shoup. Originally, the school district stated that they needed 75 acres of land for their school, and the present figure has risen to 87 acres. That's nearly 90 acres. And because the Washoe County School District hasn't even yet decided on which portion of that property that they want to build on, the figure could even increase. I'm aware that you all and the RSCVA decided to negotiate at one time with the Washoe County School District to purchase the Wild Creek Golf Course. As this progressed with little approval, such as approving to negotiate or looking into the possibility, I see that those small nods are then translated to the public as having gained full consent to seal the deal. Pursuant to Nevada Revised Statute of 244A.624, the sale of the golf course requires approval of you, of the county board. That's why I'm back here, is because things have changed. The terms have changed. The 75 acres of land is now 87 acres of land. Has there ever been a published appraisal of the Wild Creek land? UNR has offered some of its land for sale at the corner of Mill and East McCarran. The minimum acceptable bid is $220 million, which equates to 192,307 per acre of that undeveloped land. Based on that figure, the 87 acres being purchased at Wild Creek should be purchased for $16,739, and not $5 million. The Washoe County people are being ripped off for that amount for $11 million. And let's talk water rights. The effluent contract between the RSCVA and City of Sparks will end in 2022. That's just three or four years from now. City of Sparks at one time exchanged 449 acre feet of Truckee Meadow River, Truckee River Water Rights to the RSCVA for the annual use of the 500 acre feet of affluent water. What hasn't been discussed is what happens to the, when that contract is terminated. And it turns out that that Truckee River Water Rights will be reverted back to the City of Sparks. Are you aware of that? We were led to believe that those water rights were gone, lost to us forever. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Darlene Hesse.
Well, good morning, everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Nice to see all of you again. I just wish it was just, I wasn't even here to discuss Wild Creek. I've lived there for 40 years. It's a beautiful area, and I tell you, it's just, it's a dangerous thing that's going to happen to this neighborhood when all the water is flowing downhill and you're washing out of McCarran and the houses below. It is going to be like another Lemon Valley, I'm afraid, for everyone. And there was someone in the Washoe County that, I told them about this a long time ago, and that person said to me, "It's not our problem. I'll tell you what, it will be all of our problems." Because this is the main thoroughfare to Reno, to many places, and this is just a property that should be saved, even if it isn't a golf course. It should be a park, it should be of swimming pools and recreation area for people, but to put a school on there and then to congest the traffic that is congested already, I mean, this isn't just regular traffic, it's nightmare traffic. My husband and I see this every morning, bumper to bumper to bumper, and when all these cars and buses, I mean, it's just going to be a standstill. Are people going to have to start opening their business like at 12 o'clock in the afternoon and work till late at night? I just don't understand all of this happening. And, you know, we were never really made aware of anything. My husband and I happened to go to a meeting for Washoe County School. None of us were ever sent one thing in this mail. It still is the same way. My husband has requested that we get notices so we can come to meetings. We did for those notices on the computer. We do it all ourselves, and that's where we're so concerned about all of this for our city, our cities. I just think this is the wrong thing and the expense of it, when they should be going up and taking advantage of government properties to spend, to tear down a $32 million property and put in a $400 million school. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, with all the added problems, the traffic, and the beautiful animals that are there, the golfers, they love it. I love it. I just say, "Thank you, God," every day when I get up in the morning, and my husband and I say, "How could they possibly not see this beautiful property and take this property? And this lady is right about causing flooding. You guys need to really take a look at that flooding, because when they put that groundwater underneath the water, there's not going to be any place to absorb the water." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Kathy Bowling.
Good morning. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Commissioner Lucy, filled with the spirit. I would like to request, could you please add protection for the Mount Rose scenic area to your Christmas list for next year when the Cargo Container Ordinance update comes up for review? Cargo containers are industrial structures. A one-size-fits-all approach will not work in Washoe County, especially when it comes to the scenic Mount Rose area. The Mount Rose area is Washoe County's crown jewel, and as such, it deserves special protection. Industrial park aesthetics, like those that are created with industrial cargo container structures, are not appropriate in this area. When the Forest Area Plan was updated in 2009, the character statement did not include industrial elements for this area. In fact, the county wrote, "Our vision is to continue preserving, protecting, and enhancing the scenic Mount Rose area for those who live here, who recreate here, and those who visit here." Cargo containers create an industrial park character that does not preserve the attractive scenic Mount Rose area that Washoe County, back in 2008, '09, was striving to protect by, through the Forest Area Plan. During that area plan update, it was discovered that the Mount Rose Highway was the first officially scenic-dedicated scenic corridor in Nevada. As previously stated, the county vision was to preserve, protect, and enhance scenic Mount Rose area. Cargo containers were created for industrial use, not for scenic enhancement. There is absolutely nothing wrong, please hear that, nothing wrong with cargo container placements in areas like Commissioner Herman's district or Commissioner Lucy's South Valley's area, where the residents need or want these containers. But the Washoe County vision for the Mount Rose area must also be protected. This can be done by reopening the Forest Area Plan. If there's other ways to do it, great. All I want to see is protection for that area, for this area. I was informed that one area plan limited the size of metal buildings, so... I was informed that one area plan limited the size of metal buildings, so precedent has been set to allow these area plans to do that. In the September 25th meeting of 2008, the Cargo Container Staff Report on Page 2 stated the intent of this code update, which should occur at the first year, is to help define a sense of place to make our communities nice places to live. The Forest Area's sense of place and character does not include industrial structures. So I hope you can add that to your Christmas list. It would be appreciated and would serve the whole community well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no more public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Next item is our Commission Managers' Announcements. This is Item 6. Announcements, reports, and updates to include boards, commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have something, Mr. Manager?
I did. I wanted to mention regarding Item 17, if there are members of the public that are here. Item 17 is a public hearing. I believe the topic is Marengo Springs. The applicant has requested a continuance. We will open the public hearing on this item today, and then the board will have to determine whether to grant the continuance and the details of that, if that is what the board chooses to do. So that's on Item 17.
Okay. Commissioners, I don't see anybody with anything. Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Chairwoman. I do have some announcements. I would like to let the board know that I attended the Employee Appreciation Breakfast with Commissioner Hartung a few weeks ago. And if you haven't had a chance to go, that is a great event to celebrate people's years of service. I was one of the people in charge of serving coffee, which was fun, and many gifts were given away, and I encouraged the planning committee to reach out to commissioners and other elected department heads to donate some of these raffle items, because many of us get a lot of gifts that perhaps we couldn't use but would rather recycle for the Employee Appreciation Breakfast with their raffle tickets. Additionally, I suggested that they might look for a coffee professional come in and be cooking, you know, making up nice lattes, nice chais, and that I would be happy to pay for that in the next cycle for the employee appreciation through my campaign contributions. So just a couple of creative ideas for that, but it is a really joyous occasion. I'm glad that this committee and the manager and the assistant county managers and all the other staff that make this happen are there, and the communications team, to really, I think, Commissioner Hartung, I think they have a great time, the staff that's there, and it's an early morning breakfast, it's pancakes, and all the other fun stuff in our beautiful senior center. So I've never gone before, and I thought that was really something that can only get better, and you can tell it really is a morale booster. It was very, it's not a solemn event. It's very loud, it's very competitive for the raffle, there's a lot of joking around. Commissioner Hartung was the deliverer of said winning items, and I had a blast. I'll be there every year from now on. So thank you to the Committee of Employee Outreach and Engagement, what you've done with many things that you've done throughout the county, but that is a real empowered and morale-boosting engagement that is next to nothing for taxpayers to pay for, that I think the dividends that we receive after the fact more than pay for themselves. I also attended the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, which you may or may not know has really been shrunken, because it used to be like 80 people on a committee, that's a fun committee, to look at some criminal justice reform. We're looking at the opioid epidemic. We're even looking a little further now into the methamphetamine epidemic, according to our medical examiner. We, in some ways, were skipped over for the opioid and fentanyl overdoses. We are still seeing the largest overdose deaths in Washoe County drug-related to be methamphetamine-related. And one of the suppositions and speculations as to why that is, is because people are no longer simply snorting methamphetamine, but instead smoking and, most importantly, injecting, which is leading to these terrible overdoses. So I just wanted to keep the board up to date on that. I know the new governor, the governor-elect, is looking to expand his program into looking at the opioid crisis statewide, but it's good news, bad news for us. Meth has never gone away, and now it's actually killing people. So I'll keep you alert of that. And according to people in the field, that's probably one of the worst deaths you can experience. Metaphorically, they say it's like your heart exploding. Your heart doesn't actually explode, but everything speeds up so quickly that everything shuts down. Very painful. Whereas a fentanyl or an opioid overdose, while it's cold comfort to family members, is, it's not a bad death. They go to sleep, and they just never wake up. So every death is terrible, but that one isn't painful, is the takeaway for that. Still a devastation. I also wanted to let the board know that I attended the Reno Women's Golf Luncheon, annual celebration for the holidays at the Washoe Golf Course, and got updates. It's working very well. They asked for you, Commissioner Burke Bigler, and I told them that I was, I would eat for both of us, which I did. So they felt like you were there a little bit. And then finally, I have two other announcements. Number one is Happy Birthday Dad. Today's December 18th, 2018, and you are 82 years young. I am counting on 82 more. I love you very much, and I forgot to bring you your ice cream this morning. I was in a hurry. And then I also wanted to say to all of the constituents and citizens of Washoe County, marry everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Lucy.
That's a tough one to follow, Vice Chair. I mean, wow. Well, Madam Chair, if I can, I'd like to ask again, staff, if we can have an update from CSD in regards to the Reindeer Lodge and what's going on with the red tag and the situation. We did ask for that at the Fire Board for fire safety issues, but we want to make sure that that's being addressed from CSD and what the future plans are for the Reindeer Lodge as it pertains to the red tag and what's being handled there. So that would be the only request I have at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We could, or the last meeting we had, trying to think what day it was, I requested that, or I suggested that we go back to Robert's rules from the change we made a time, little time ago, to Mason's. And so I just wanted to thank you for having that on the agenda today. That was very fast. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Yes, we'll talk about it when we do that item. I can't remember when that item is, but what number it is, but yeah. Yeah, we'll talk about it. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received a couple of phone calls this weekend thanking the county, NDOT, and RTC for the light at Pyramid and Cuyahoga La Plata.
That's excellent. I was just out there this weekend.
These folks are just thrilled, and in fact, the one person, she said to me, she said, you know, you, we don't know how many lives you've saved, but you have saved lives with this. And so I wanted to pass that on, and then let everyone know that the Acceleration Lane from the Hall Road to West Cuyahoga La Plata is in the works. We are working on that, and that is, that's in the queue. So hopefully, hopefully by the spring, we'll have it. Right now, they're not doing much paving, although I think it's still warm enough, but they're still a little leery about that. Thank you so much, Commissioner Jung, for acknowledging the employee breakfast. I had a great time. It was, it was wonderful to go around to each one of the tables. You were on coffee duty, I was on water duty. They don't allow me hot things.
Well, after, after dropping a stove on your arm, I can understand why.
It was an oven.
Oh, okay.
The weight, but, but we'll leave that for another day. But it was, it was just, it was truly a wonderful time, and the employees were warm, engaging, and gracious to us, and it was just, it was a real treat for me to go out and meet them and serve them. So I too look forward to it next year, and I think you have a great idea, Commissioner Jung, with, we get all kinds of little stuff, things that, I don't know whether we can give away wine in that, in that particular venue, but there are many other things, little items, that we certainly, many of them I have no idea what to do with, and so I think it's, I think that's a wonderful idea. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Jung.
Sorry, I just remembered one thing. I saw that Mr. Nedu was in the back somewhere with the Realtors, and I've heard on the news, but I've never had an update from staff about these Airbnb-like regulations and what we're going to do with those. And I have a potential solution before staff gets too deep in the weeds of this, and that is, if you look back, this is back when I worked at the City of Reno, so 2004 to 2007, we had very similar issues in the University District where I live, and that is with people who were renting homes to students who weren't necessarily the best neighbors that anybody ever had in their life, and they did a red dot program where the homes were flagged as a nuisance, and if they had so many, then they were, they were not allowed to continue renting out their homes. So I would suggest staff look into what that law was and how it was enacted through, and I believe the executing authority at that time was the Greek Life and Student Housing Coordinator, who no longer is there, but I believe there's a new person there in that position. But it might be a way to flag nuisance properties that are being rented via Airbnb, et cetera, that are essentially, you know, ruining it for everybody, because I know it's a great tax revenue for the cities and the county. I know that we're looking at it up in Commissioner Burke Bigler's district, of which there aren't very many other lodging alternatives. So that might be a workaround that would sort of clean that up, and the one bad operator would be effectively shut down because of the nuisance that they are creating. So that's just a food for thought. I would like a staff update on this as well, once it's come to fruition. As I said, the first time I heard about it was actually on the news, so, and it really doesn't affect my district that much, but I do vote on it, so it'd be nice to have an update and to give feedback on that as well. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
You're welcome. And just to give you a little update, we are, staff is still in the process of working through this, and we probably will not be addressing it before the commission, before end of January at the earliest, probably sometime in February, because we are working through how, exactly how we're going to, and then we need to have a couple of meetings in Incline Village before we really bring a policy forward also. And I currently have a meeting in Incline Village scheduled for the 21st, so in the evening on the 21st, to talk about, you know, the issue up there, so we will be moving forward on that. Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last thing I forgot to bring up, and I wanted to point out, last, last week, Commissioner Hartung and I got the opportunity to attend the opening and so-called ribbon-cutting of the Four Street Prater Project. I want to point out, this was a project that was brought forth by RTC in both City of Sparks and City of Reno, and obviously Washoe County, to redo this, the Four Street Prater Corridor. Tremendous improvements along that corridor. And first, I want to thank all of the businesses along the Four Street Prater Corridor that held in there and really endured through that construction. It was very challenging, I know, including, including me being one of those businesses. It was an enduring time, but the outcome and the product of this is tremendous. And I don't think people realize the heritage, the rich heritage that that road has, the old US 40 that has been around since both Washoe County was, became a county and the City of Reno became a city. This has been one of the routes that we had streetcars up and down for many, many years. We had, I mean, some of the first federal transit funding that came in the country after the Federal Transit Authority was created in the '30s, came to Reno to build that US 40. So that, there is a lot of rich history, and so the big thing about this is that the federal government did help tremendously through tiger grants fund this project to provide electric buses. We will be the first ones to provide a full fleet of electric buses that will run along the Lincoln Line to and from Sparks Centennial Plaza and the Four Street Station. And, but this is going to be all funded, was funded significantly, but through grants of the federal government, and we came in under time and under budget on the project. And so we will have, we will be a, kind of a national outlook for, or spotlight for individuals coming to look at how we utilize electric buses within our community, and also how we have been able to procure those funding and really build those projects within a suitable range and under budget. So it was a wonderful project, big success for the entire community and all the individuals. If you get an opportunity, please take a trip on that bus. The new brewery district downtown, unbelievable. And if you can, go to RTC.com, look at the history. I mean, it's unbelievable, the history that's gone along in that area. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. I see Commissioner Hartung has one more thing.
Yeah, and I just wanted to fill a little bit in, and Commissioner Lucy worked really hard on this in DC. Those Proterra buses are perhaps the finest electric bus in the world that we have, and we are one of six communities that have them, and he touched on that topic. We are, we are so far ahead of many communities, and Commissioner Lucy, you may want to remind people on this also. Commissioner Lucy is the vice chair. Don't, don't people get to ride for free on that line all the way through January, is it 31st?
Don't say that, Leo will flip out. No, it was actually just that day.
Oh, is it just that day?
Just that day, we had the free, free rides just that day.
I thought that it was through the, through the month at least.
No, no, not for, no, not for Lincoln Line, not for that. I'll have to check. Let me check. But I was only aware that it was just that day.
Okay. I thought it was that route was, was free right now.
It might be, it might be.
Yeah.
So I'll follow up, but we'll find out.
Okay.
And if not, Commissioner Hartung will pay your fair.
Sorry, excuse me. Well, thank you, guys, and I want to say a big thank you to both our RTC members who, both Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner Hartung, who, who obviously are doing a very, very good job, because we've got the light at Cuyahoga La Plata, and we finally got this whole road put together and all the work, and that was a lot of work to underground all that stuff and get all that done, and you guys are really working hard for us, and we appreciate all that you're doing. So I, I don't see anything else, so we will close Item 6 and bring it back to the board, I mean, and bring it back to Item 7. Commissioner Vice Chair Jung, that is donations, if you would handle that for us.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to direct the public's attention to Agenda Item 7A, donations. And this is a 12 mural painting donation from local artist Candace Ray that benefits the Second Judicial District Court Reading Room Project for children and families attending, and this is estimated to be in the amount of $3,000 where we'd go out and procure this donation. And the murals depict popular scenes from children's books, such as Dr. Seuss's Oh! The Places You'll Go, and Eric Carls, The Very Hungry Caterpillar. So if you get a chance, go see these, and I want to thank the artists. I love that we live in an arts-rich county, art-rich county, and that these artists not only give back simply in the quality of life that we are able to have with artists in our community, but they also give back with their very valuable work. So thank you so much. The artist again is Candace Ray. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Okay, is that a motion?
I move to approve that.
All right. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this, Madam Chair? Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay, I didn't see any, but I thought I'd check. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion carries five, nothing, with all commissioners voting. Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chair Jung.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may go back and just open 6 really quick, I just do, I do need to make a quick clarification on my comment.
Okay, let's open Items, reopen Item 6.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hartung is correct, and I was incorrect. The Lincoln Line is available for free transit all the way through January 1st.
Oh, perfect. Sounds great.
So January 1st through the end of the year, you can, you can, you can utilize the Lincoln Line fare-free.
Super. Thank you, Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner Hartung for that. And so we will close Item 6 and move on to Item 8. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, Item 8, those are our proclamations for today. The first being Item 8A1, proclaiming a heartfelt gratitude and thank you to Judge Patricia Lynch for her public service to Washoe County and the citizens of northern Nevada. her public service to Washoe County and the citizens of Northern Nevada. Commissioner Herman will come down to read the proclamation, joined by Judge Lynch.
Proclamation. Whereas Judge Patricia Lynch has dedicated more than 12 years of service as a justice of the peace for Reno Justice Court, and whereas during her career and service to Washoe County, Judge Patricia Lynch made a tremendous impact as an original member of the Nevada Council for the Prevention of Domestic Violence and a member of many other organizations, and whereas Judge Patricia Lynch came to Reno Justice Court after previously serving as the elected Reno City Attorney for almost 20 years, serving an unprecedented five terms, previously serving as a Deputy Attorney General, a Deputy City Attorney, a legislative assistant in the US House of Representatives, a Vista lawyer at Washoe Legal Services, and as a practicing private attorney, and whereas Judge Patricia Lynch has announced her retirement when her term as the Reno Justice Court Department One, Justice of the Peace, expires on January 7th, 2019, and whereas Judge Patricia Lynch has demonstrated her dedication and her commitment to public service. Now, therefore, the Washoe Board of Commissioners does hereby give a heartfelt thank you to Judge Patricia Lynch for her public service to Washoe County and the citizens of Northern Nevada, dated this 18th day of December 2018, signed by Marcia Burke Bigler, Chair, Board of County Commissioners. I am so impressed.
Thank you so much.
What a fine proclamation, and thank you. Maybe you'd like to say a word or two.
Just very briefly, I just, my career has mostly been public service, and you're all public servants, and I want to also thank you, because you put yourself out there, and you have to run for office, and you have to spend a lot of long hours doing interesting things that you might not otherwise do, but we need this to make our society work, and we need the civility, and we need good people like you. I ran eight campaigns, which is amazing when I look back on it, and I'm watching it progressively get harder and nastier, and I think that's a bad trend, because what makes our society so important is that we do. We're a country, and I do some international work and consulting and different things, we're a country that lets the citizens really participate. We really do, and that's real important. So I want to thank you all for all that you've done, and I want to thank the community, I know this is probably televised, I want to thank the community for electing me and letting me serve, because it's been a real blessing, and you grow by what you give, and I'm glad I've been able to give. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. It's been my pleasure to work with you for many years in a lot of different capacities, and you've always been a pleasure to work with, and we will miss you, and we hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to apply to be a senior judge, so I'll keep my hand in a little bit, but I'll be involved in some volunteer things.
Great.
So, thank you.
Nice to see you. And are we going to do photos? Shall we do them all at once, or do them, do you mind waiting for just a few minutes and we'll get the other two done? Okay, good, and then we'll get all three photos at the same time. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is item 8A2 on today's agenda. This is proclaiming a heartfelt gratitude and thank you to Washoe County Recorder Larry Bertness for his public service to Washoe County since 2013.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This is a wonderful honor, but also, at the same time, a little bit solemn for me. You know, Larry has been a wonderful individual and very welcoming since the day I walked into the office. He's been a mentor, somebody I can turn to for questions and some guidance many, many times, and has always been a wealth of information, and I really do have enjoyed working with him and spending the time of my first tenure with him, and I wish him the best. So this proclamation is in his honor today. Washoe County does, whereas sees Larry Bertness as has served as Washoe County Recorder since 2013, and whereas Larry Bertness has started his career with Washoe County in 1996 with the Imaging and Records Management Division before joining the Recorder's Office in 2001 as a chief deputy recorder under County Recorder Kathy Burke. And whereas during his administration with the Washoe County Recorder's Office, Larry stood out on a national level for his devotion to protection and preservation of public records. And whereas Larry engaged in the setting of standards and best practices with his peers around the state of Nevada and across the country. And whereas while serving as a Washoe County Recorder, Larry spread his influence on the nation and global level through his terms as President of the County Fiscal Officers Association of Nevada, CFOA in 2015, the President of the International Association of Government Officials, IGO, in 2017, the President of the Property Records and Industry Association, PRIA, in 2018. And whereas Larry's innovative approach to pioneering efforts in local government, becoming one of the first of 20 counties in the country to implement electronic recording, and the first county to nationally utilize blockchain technology in practical records applications. And whereas because of Larry's pioneering efforts, he and his team have received national recognition over the years, and mostly viewed in 2018 Washoe Impact Awards for quality public service. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim our heartfelt gratitude to Larry Bertness for his years of service to this community and protection and preservation of public records for the Washoe County Organization, dated this 18th day of December 2018, signed by our Chair, Marcia Burke Bigler. Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lucy, and Madam Chair, to you and the other commissioners. This is an interesting change for me. I have been so appreciative of the opportunity to serve with you all, with my staff, with the members of the community. It has been truly an honor and a pleasure, and I must commend my staff, not only for putting up with me over the last years, but also not afraid to press forward and to achieve some of the great accomplishments that our office has achieved, some of which Commissioner Lucy described in the proclamation. It's a real honor to be a standout county Recorder's Office amongst the 3,600 of them that exist in the United States. I take great pride in those achievements on behalf of my staff. I'm not hanging up my spurs yet, even though I get to retire from Washoe County, I'm hoping to use the 45 years of experience in the county Recorder's space that I have in the private sector and in the public sector to some good use. I'm not sure what that will be or when that will take place, but I'm looking forward to exciting new chapters for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you very much for all the support you've given me since I got elected, as well as all the great things you've done for this county. We really appreciate it. And please hang around so we can get a picture with you. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Our next proclamation is item 8A3. This is proclaiming gratitude and a thank you to Sheriff Chuck Allen for his public service to Washoe County and the citizens of Northern Nevada.
And while they're approaching the podium, Madam Chair, I received a document from Anne Marie Grant, which I will place on the record, and I can distribute to the board if you'd wish.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartung, do not hurt yourself any further. He dropped an oven.
No laughing over there.
He was installing it, and it fell on him.
She's laughing because she knows I'm probably going to hurt myself. You know, this is a really, this is a really important acknowledgement of our sheriff and of law enforcement. You know, we talk about, we talk about the fragility of freedom and what it means to us, and we always think about our veterans and our active military, but what we have with law enforcement is folks who are willing to strap on a bullet resistant every single day and go and put themselves between you, me, and harm's way, and they do it without thinking about it. And it's such an honor for me to read this to you, Sheriff. You will, you've joined a long list of sheriffs in Washoe County, and you've done some really great things, and I'm very, very honored to do this today. This is a proclamation for Sheriff Chuck Allen, whereas Chuck Allen has been a public servant in law enforcement for over 29 years, with the last four as the Washoe County Sheriff. And whereas during his tenure as Sheriff of Washoe County, he created the Green Ribbon Committee for Public Outreach, a group of community leaders and engaged citizens whose purpose is to improve and promote communication and community awareness of the Sheriff's Office programs, services, and initiatives. And whereas, under his leadership, the Forensic Science Division successfully processed the backlog of sexual assault kits for Northern Nevada. And whereas Sheriff Allen served as a leader in the community, advocating for Special Olympics, raising thousands of dollars through the annual Cops and Burgers and Polar Plunge campaigns, as well as creating the No Shave Campaign, raising more than $50,000 for local charities. And whereas Sheriff Allen can be credited with the creation of the Women's Health Initiative Program, a partnership with the Washoe County Health District, host of the Sheriff's Office Community Information Forum, UNR Early Head Start Program, Inside Out Prison Exchange Program, a partnership with the University of Nevada Reno, and the Community Engagement Office, to just name a few. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim our gratitude to Sheriff Chuck Allen for his service to law enforcement, our community, and the Washoe County Organization. It's dated this 18th day of December 2018, signed by the hand of our Chair, Marcia Burke Bigler. Sheriff? Thank you so much.
Madam Chair and Board, County Manager, Mr. Ripley, Madam Clerk, my fellow electeds, first of all, thank you for the proclamation. It's very humbling to stand up here today to receive the accolades from all of you. Most of what Commissioner Hartung wrote, I give credit to my staff. As a leader of an organization, you have to put yourself around people that you trust, and so I do want to thank my entire executive team for hanging in there with me for the past four years, but I also would like to thank every single man and woman, volunteer, sworn member, civilian employee of the Sheriff's Office. They are what make the organization tick, and they are who keep us safe each and every day. I've had a proud moment serving as sheriff. Obviously, I've had some incredible challenges, both personally and organizationally, but the amount of opportunities and experiences that I've had as sheriff, I would have never, ever had, had I not served in this role. So my goal is moving forward, I don't know. People ask me every day what I'm going to do next, I don't know, but I do know I'm going on a vacation in January. And as I've promised all along, the organization is filled with great leaders. I know there's Captain Herrera in the back, Lieutenant Bassi, but our next sheriff will have some incredible people to surround himself with, and my goal along was to leave the agency better than when I found it and work until that last day, and I look forward to seeing all of you on January 7th. And then lastly, I want to thank every single citizen of Washoe County for allowing me to serve you as your sheriff. So thank you all, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, Sheriff Allen. We appreciate all that you've done in the last four years, and you've now joined a very elite, small group of former sheriffs for Washoe County, and we wish you the best of luck in whatever you decide to do next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shall we do some pictures? Okay, we are back. And we will now go to item number nine, Mr. Manager.
We need motions, Madam Chair.
Oh, we do need a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the proclamation for Chuck Allen.
Can we do them all in one, or do we have to do them individually?
Just one.
Okay. So we, so would you amend to approve them all?
Commissioner Lucy was jamming in ahead of me. I'll let him make.
Madam Chair, I would make the motion that we approve all the proclamations today.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving all the proclamations?
Public comment.
Oh, do we have any public comment? There's nothing on my screen.
No, we did not.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your opposed, please cast your vote on the screen and then affirm your vote above. The motion passes five to nothing with all commissioners voting. Okay. Now we move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Item nine is our consent agenda today, represented by items nine A through nine D one, nine D two.
Okay. Do we have any?
I'm sorry, nine.
I D two.
Two.
Okay. Do we, commissioners, anybody want anything, any information on anything or anything pulled? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I see none on any item, Madam Chair.
All right. In that case, I'm looking.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Affirm your vote up above. I don't think we, don't vote on the screen on this. Motion carries five nothing with all commissioners voting. Mr. Manager, should we do our block vote? Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I propose via motion, items 10, 11, 12, and 13 be put in block.
Okay. Do I have a second for that? Mr. Manager, would you like to read them?
How could you do that? Item 10 is a recommendation to approve a direct grant award of $171,340 with no match required from the William N. Pennington Foundation to the Washoe County Sheriff's Search and Rescue Unit for the purchase of equipment for the retroactive grant term of 11/27/18 through 9/30/19, and have approved Direct Contract Manager to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 11 is a recommendation to award bid number 3067-19 for water and wastewater treatment chemicals on behalf of the Community Service Department Utility Services Group, and on a requirements basis to Olin Core Alkali Products in the estimated annual amount of $209,025, and to the Thatcher Company of Nevada in the estimated annual amount of $15,750, and authorize the purchasing contract manager to execute the necessary purchase orders over the award period from January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, with the provision for two one-year extensions at the county's option. Item 12 is a recommendation to award bid number 3074-19 for environmental sample testing, data review, and reporting to Alpha Analytical, the most qualified bidder, in an estimated amount, annual amount of $150,000, and authorize the purchasing contract manager to execute the necessary purchase orders over the award period commencing February 4, 2019, through February 3, 2020, for a one-year period with two one-year renewal options at the discretion of the county, and approve a contingency for each optional renewal year to accommodate annual increases in the number of samples in the amount of $168,750 for the first year, one-year renewal, and $189,844 for the second one-year renewal. And item 13 is a recommendation to approve amendment number one to funding agreement between the State of Nevada acting by and through its Division of State Lands and Washoe County Community Service Department for Phase Five of the Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project to extend the term from December 31, 2018, to June 30, 2019, and revise the project budget, no fiscal impact to Washoe County, and approve amendment number one to the agreement regarding November 2002. State Question One, Parks and Open Space Bond Issue, Lake Tahoe Bike Path Project Funding between Washoe County and Tahoe Transportation District to extend the obligation of funds from December 31, 2018, to June 30, 2019, and revise the project budget, no fiscal impact to Washoe County, and authorize Assistant County Manager Dave Solero to execute all amendments and related documents. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And did you want to mention the grant award?
Yes, I want to apologize to the chairwoman. I forgot, and I wrote myself a special note in the consent item and then skipped over it. To direct your attention to item nine, Diaz and Dog, one, and this is a recommendation to approve Commissioner and Chairwoman Marsha Burke Bigler, District One's Commission District Special Fund Disbursement, in the amount of $15,000. And this is going to the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District to support education efforts and total maximum daily load assistance. I am sure that everybody who uses the Tahoe Basin, whether it is in her district or in Douglas County or California districts, really appreciate your support and your willingness always to keep Tahoe blue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so I appreciate that with going back to nine. So now we are back on the four items on the block vote. Are there, I don't see any public comment. Do you have any, Madam Clerk?
There was none.
Okay, there's no public comment. We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any comments on these? Seeing none. All those in favor of the block vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we do vote on the screen here?
I actually did it for you, and it's already left the screen.
All right, so it's already left the screen. So, and we didn't get a chance to affirm it above?
Correct.
Okay, but we.
It's five to nothing is what it was.
So everybody voted on that, so five to nothing with all commissioners voting. And with that, we are back to you, Mr. Manager.
Chair, I believe it might be appropriate to go to item 17. Individuals in the audience waiting for that item. And then if we could, perhaps I'd suggest we go to 17. After 17, we go to 15 and 16, and then back to 14.
Okay.
So item 17 is a public hearing to affirm or modify or reverse the Washington County Planning Commission's denial of a master plan amendment, WMPA 18-004, Marengo Springs, application, and a regulatory zone amendment, WRZA 18-004, application. And should the Board decide to reverse the denial, possible action to adopt the master plan and regulatory zone amendments, and if adopted, authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions to that effect. As I mentioned earlier, looking for staff that's in the room to cover this item. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant had requested a continuance. My suggestion is that you open the public hearing, close the public hearing if there are people, individuals here to speak, close the public hearing, and then have a discussion on what the Board would desire to do related to a continuance.
Okay. We will open the public hearing, and we do have three public here to speak. Mr. Solero, would you like to say something first?
Good afternoon. Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. I thought I would just cover any questions that you may have regarding things that County Manager already discussed. Simply, we've had a request from the applicant to pull this appeal at this time. They've got some changes they want to propose, I believe, to staff. And so we had this agendized, ready to go, but they've requested this. So, you know, per the manager's direction, I think hearing from the public that is here today would be helpful to staff and the appellant.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Lucy.
Mr. Solero, based upon the request by the applicant to, for us to grant a continuance, they recommend that they have some changes that they're going to work on. Now, if they come back with any kind of subsequent changes, this, it would change their initial application, and they would have to go through the process again. Is that correct?
That is what staff is trying to review right now, whether they can come directly back to this Board, or whether it's got to go through the entire process. I believe the District Attorney's Office had some conversations this morning with some of my staff, you know, kind of reviewing what that process looks like. So I'm not sure if Mr. Liparelli is in a position to be able to.
Have they enlightened you with what those changes would be subsequently?
I have not seen anything.
Okay.
Mr. Liparelli?
Sorry. Madam Chair, the item is coming to you as an appeal. And the appellant has the duty of, or burden of persuasion to convince this Board that the decision below was not right. And the decision below was based on an application that was made, processed by the staff, and heard by the Planning Commission. So it's appropriate and fine to continue the appeal to a specific date, so that people who have been tracking this project through the system can know when the Board's going to resume its hearing of this item. The other option is to just withdraw the appeal and the project in general, and to start fresh with a different project, because I don't understand how it would be possible for significant changes to the project to be made without it going back to the Planning Commission anyway. Remember, we're dealing with a master plan amendment and changes that are made by the Board of County Commissioners to a decision of the Planning Commission have to go back to the Planning Commission anyway. So I guess I'm saying this, pick a date and time to resume this hearing and continue on with the appeal, or accept the developer's communication as a withdrawal and a fresh start. But I don't think there's much in between.
Thank you, Mr. Liparelli. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Liparelli, can you elaborate on the continuance and the timeframes that are allowed?
State law mandates a 60-day time period, and that the county's ordinances have to comply with the state law. There is an understanding and a practice among counties and developers that if there's agreement of the developer to extend the time, that they're really not prejudiced in any way by that if they're agreeing to the extension of time. So generally, you want to do your hearing within 60 days of the time that the application for appeal is deemed complete. I don't know what that date is. Mr. Solero may know. So if you can do it within the 60 days, that's ideal. If you want to go outside that 60 days, it's okay, as long as the developer agrees. But I don't think it's permissible to have an open-ended continuance without a specific date.
So, and really, the question I was asking, is it 60 days from now, or 60 days from the, it was from the Planning Commission meeting date?
It's 60 days from the date that the staff deems the application for appeal to be complete.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I would just, for the record, and then we'll go to public comment, I would just simply say, I have a, I personally have a problem granting an extension for rehearing before us if there are going to be changes made to this. It has, I personally think it needs to go back to the Planning Commission for a complete review. So having said that, however, let's go to public comment. Mr. Solero, if that's acceptable to you, we will start with Ms. Colling Morissette.
Good afternoon, Commission. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the comments around the continuations, whether it should go back. If the applicant is going to make changes or modifications, I'm glad to hear the attorney recommend that it should go back to the Planning Commission. The reason I'm speaking today is there was a petition put forth by the residents of the South Valley, asking you to kindly affirm and maintain the decision of the Planning Commission's denial of the project. I have a petition with me, I have sent it electronically to both the Chairman and to Commissioner Lucy. I also have an original copy with signatures to give to the Secretary. Our main concerns around the petition were concerns around health, safety, the welfare of the community, fire, egress, flooding, as well as maintaining the rural heritage and rural character of the community. This is an amendment to the master plan, which really is an amendment to the South Valley Plan, and we wanted to make sure that our community needs or heard. One of the main concerns is that the residents felt that they would like to hear the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one. One developer should not have the power to change our lives so dramatically with just the sweep or the change of a color on a map. This petition was put forth respectfully by the residents. It was interesting, only 30 residents were notified about this change, 30. My petition has over 90 names. I was still getting people asking to sign the petition this morning. If we'd had more time, I think we could have had upwards of 300 signatures of asking the Commission to affirm the denial of this petition. So that, I really don't have any more to say, other than I'd like to submit the petition for record. We thank you for your service to our community and for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Alvin Feliciano. Siana? Siana? I'll let you pronounce it.
Yes, I'm Alvin Feliciano. I've lived at 2670 Ravaza Road now almost 39 years. And in those 39 years, we've seen a lot of changes in our community. But I want to give you a little background on myself, so I think you'll maybe understand where I'm coming from. I retired after almost 28 years with, well, now Envy Energy. And when I retired, I was a manager of corporate safety for the company. One of my main goals was, and one of my objectives was, was risk management. That's what we always tried to do in safety. Prevent hazards, eliminate hazards, and don't let them come back on us once we've seen what's happening. This is my main concern where we live. We have seen a number of fires in our area. We've seen some floods, too. That little unknown creek behind us, I saw a guy kayaking down that, one of the floods. And like I've told people, you know, they say it's a 100-year flood. Well, I must be 400 years old, because we've had four of them out there. One of them actually undermined Ravaza Road where you couldn't even get out, even with a four-wheel drive. The road was not passable, because it would collapse under your vehicle. And so my concern, though, floods are bad, fires are killers. And we've actually, the one big one we had, came through, burned two homes up in our area. 350-gallon propane tank really failed. It blew that up and burned a fifth wheel up. The bark at the end of my grass caught fire. And thank goodness, the fireman put that out. And after that, I removed a lot of my junipers because of that. And yes, we're on acres. We had a little bit of, you know, fire break in that type of room. But one of the firemen that live up in our area said it took them almost an hour to get up Toll Road during that time, because of the traffic and people trying to get out of the area. As you all know, fire travels very rapidly. We saw that in Pioneer. My cousin lost her home and her car. So the only thing she could save was her life and her dog. So these things are very dangerous. That potential is always out there. And it doesn't take much to start a fire. And once it gets going, everybody knows of those, as my cousin said one time when she was down with Morgan, she said, "What do you folks use out here for wind gauges, chains?" She said, "I've never seen wind blow like this." And that's what caused that fire to spread so quickly at a time that it burned a couple homes in our area. And I mean burned them, burned the mudsill out of the, out of the concrete on the foundations. So my greatest fear again is that. But again, I want to thank you, folks, for all your service. I know it's not a difficult, not an easy situation at times. But my greatest concern is, too, is this, what has changed so much that the Planning Commission's findings would not be followed or recommendations? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Bill Bauer.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bill Bauer. I am a resident of Majestic Valley Estates, one of the developments in this area. We have received at least over 80, and Ms. Morissette said more, signers to the petition that are against the modification of the Planning Commission's denial of the applicant, Dr. Harry Frye's request to include a higher density of homes in this area than was originally approved. When we have required data from Dr. Frye and his engineering companies, they merely state that we have to trust them, believe. state that we have to trust them, believe them, that these modifications will meet all the safety and fire and flooding concerns, and we do not believe them. Third and foremost, paragraph H of the petition, I submit that Dr. Frye is a businessman of low ethical standards, who will say anything, promise anything, but do the minimum required by the cheapest method possible when he is forced to comply. His objective is not to create a community in harmony with the area, but to make the biggest buck and move on. The refuse this man leaves in his wake is of no consequence to him as his moral compass points only towards money. He has been taken to the Nevada State Real Estate Division's ombudsman's office, and he has lost on that, those occasions. He has legal actions pending against him, and the HOA for Majestic Grants, too, have started legal proceedings against him for his failures to meet promised obligations. People who have done real estate transactions with this man do not trust him, do not believe him when he promises to abate our concerns. We have experienced otherwise, and I urge the Board of Commissioners to take this into consideration in, and apparently with, if he appeals the planning commission's unanimous denial of his attempt to rezone these parcels to higher density. We do not believe him. Thank you for your time.
No more speakers. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Commissioners, comments, questions? Commissioner Lucy.
Madam Chair, I did receive the petition that was presented by many of the residents this morning via email. I do have that electronically. I have met with the engineer for the developer, and they have gone, walked us, myself and Commissioner Hartung, through the project and gave us some answer questions. I still have many concerns on this, all that I've been, have been voiced to the applicant. They said they would make those changes. I don't know what those changes are. We still are waiting for that. So I would look that if we do, if they do make subsequent changes, as you had pointed out, that they do go through the process entirely, again, along with community, some more community outreach, because it sounds like that is what is lacking so far in this project.
Okay, is that a motion to deny?
Well, I mean, I'm not making a motion at this time. I actually like to ask the applicant, because I believe the applicant is here, or at least the representative for the applicant, what would be acceptable to them in regards to their process, because through that discussion, so if you can.
Morning, Commissioners, or afternoon, I don't know what it is now anymore. Scott Wright, representing the applicant. So we would like a continuance on this. I understand 60 days, so we can come back sometime in February or March. I understand the uncertainty there, that you want us to redo the process from the beginning. We've done the cab and the neighborhood meeting. I understand now with the petition, we have more access to names. We were using the buffer that they gave us. So if we have more access to more neighbors, we'd go back to them and kind of address the gray area of what has been talked about. I know a lot of what we talked about was, the concerns of the project were things that we were looking forward to addressing in the tentative map process. So things like lot sizes were a big concern, and fire and safety and access. So we'd like to kind of draw that. I know we can't submit it with our application. If we go over again, we can't formally submit, but we'd like to put it on record. So we'd like to meet with everyone, show them what we have, get their feedback, and then come back and put what we would like to see going forward on record. Does that answer your questions?
Mr. Leparelli, isn't that considered a new application?
Madam Chair, it's difficult to know without seeing what it is. So my suggestion would be this, pick a date in February or March to continue this item and allow the developer to fill out their ideas about what they can possibly do. And if it won't work within the boundaries of the application itself, the developer can withdraw that and start over. But if they come up with a solution that kind of fits the architecture of the original application, and they want to have a hearing on their appeal, they haven't lost that opportunity. But we can't, we can't leave it open-ended. If we're going to grant a continuance, we need to pick a day.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the holidays and currently the timing at this time, I would like to see if it would be acceptable by this board that we grant the applicant until the first meeting of March to continue this item, to allow them the opportunity to address concerns of the public, that if they can appropriately address those concerns and bring that back to the board without subsequent changes, dramatic changes to the current application, that this board can hear it. If there are subsequent changes significantly, then we would recommend that, obviously. But we would wait till that first meeting in March to just make that decision.
Okay.
I would make that as a motion if that was, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, for the record, that would, that date would be March 12th.
Yes.
March 12th. So the first meeting would be March 12th, for those in the audience. We were going to grant that continuance until that time. That would be my motion.
I'll second that. It's Commissioner Lucy's district, and, you know, and I think that he's the one who has to answer.
Mr. Leparelli.
Madam Chair, that's a perfectly fine motion with the date that the manager mentioned. Just to clarify, if I misled earlier, when the board has a hearing, the board does have the option of modifying, reversing, or affirming the decision of the planning commission. And that, if it was a reversal or a modification, it would go back to the planning commission as the existing project. So it wouldn't start over at the cab level in the very, very beginning, but it would go back to the planning commission for a report because that's what the state law requires for master plan amendments. If it's an affirmance of the planning commission's denial, then the appeal is basically denied and the matter is concluded. So all those options are still open, and the developer can, of course, at any time, withdraw and start over in their discretion, if that makes the most sense.
Thank you, Mr. Leparelli. Commissioner Hartung.
Under discussion, Madam Chair. Thank you. Mr. Leparelli, talk to us briefly, if we were to deny the application or uphold the planning commission's decision, is the applicant prohibited for a period of time from reapplying? Is there any sort of stay period that they, you know, that they have to abide by?
Madam Chair, I just don't know. I'd have to look that up. I don't want to guess. Maybe staff knows. But if they're denied, of course, they'll have a fairly short period of time to consider judicial review, which is, you know, always available to developers. I just don't know if there's a, if there's a bar on a follow-up application for a reapplication.
Thank you. Under discussion. I would just note for the record that I will, I will support this motion as long as we're publicly affirming on the record that if there's substantial, and, you know, that's a decision that I get to make, whether I think it's substantial for me, if there are any changes that are substantial to this, it goes back to the planning commission for a full review. So I, otherwise, I can't, I will, I couldn't support the motion, so. Is that acceptable to the?
Absolutely.
And to the, okay, good. All right, so we have done public comment. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen. And Madam Clerk, for the record, you do have the motion clarified? The motion passes 5-0 with all commissioners voting. So it will go back for review with the staff and with the people who live in the neighborhood, the broad-based people who live in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Solero. I appreciate your time. Okay, Mr. Manager, where are we going now?
Madam Chair, I would suggest we go to item 15.
Okay.
Item 15 is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance submitting Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please do the introduction and first reading for us, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This will be Bill Number 1814, an ordinance submitting Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code by repealing a section related to the Community Relations Program, by repealing a section related to the Management Services Program, by repealing all provisions related to the Employment and Training Department, by repealing a section related to telephone toll call logs, by revising provisions relating to meetings of the Board of County Commissioners, by revising provisions related to the powers and duties of the county manager and assistant county managers, and by revising a section concerning the county manager's expenditures for incidental food and entertainment expenses for certain activities.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
We're prepared to give an overview. This ordinance update has really, has been in process now for, really for a number of years on some of these items. This is, in a sense, bringing code in compliance with, or bringing what we're doing in number instances in compliance with code, a number of the organizational changes we've made, particularly in the county manager's office, related to community relations, management services, those sorts of things. So we're prepared to give an overview, if you'd like to do that before you do the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I believe Vice Chair John is asking for an overview.
Okay, Christine Vladech will lead us through that, and I may interject a few comments here and there as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'll just kind of do a quick walkthrough, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Some of the major highlights and the changes, as John has mentioned, is really a cleanup reflecting reorganizations that have happened in the county manager's office and current practices. The first area, Section 5017, regular meetings of the county commissioners, is really just stating that meetings are to be held in accordance with Nevada's open meeting law, and then citing the NRS that goes along with that.
And if I could interject, one of the other changes there is our practice of canceling meetings. This gives the chair, or in the absence of the chair, the vice chair, the ability to say, "There's not enough business for a particular meeting, so let's cancel that meeting."
Okay. And then Section 5.022 regarding the assistant county managers and creation of the positions, there's language added there that the county manager shall appoint, you know, based on the qualifications determined by the county manager. And then it kind of outlines some of the areas that the assistant county managers are responsible for. For example, managing various appointed department heads, overseeing special projects and programs, and acting as a liaison with various elected department heads.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair John, do you want to?
Where is this in our staff report? I don't see any of that.
It's page, that's on page, starts on page three.
So are you, are you going through the actual ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, can you reference pages? And, well, we don't get it in red. We don't get it in red. It's black and white.
Well, I mean, red line as in strike through, so you can see the changes. So it's page four of that document, and it's bolded.
Okay.
Actually, that started on page three regarding the assistant county managers, and finishes up at the top of page four.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next, Section 5.0215 regarding the county manager's powers and duties. Again, it's a cleanup to reflect the programs and the areas of county manager's office as it currently operates. So it's calling out, the office of the county manager includes legislative affairs, strategic planning, emergency management, grant administration, communications, budget, internal audits, constituent services, security of county facilities, administrative hearing office, and others as are necessary for the proper functioning of the office. And then down on Items 3 and 4, deal with the county manager's ability to, in number three, designate an acting director of a department should one of those positions become vacant, that the county manager has the authority to do that, and that will seek within 30 days the board's approval of that. And then number four is, the county manager may designate an acting county manager to serve in the event of the county manager's temporary absence for a period of no longer than 45 days. And that the county manager's salary shall be fixed by the Board of County Commissioners. And then some minor changes, Section 5.0244, expenditures for incidental food and entertainment. There's a proposed increase of $2,500 to $5,000 for incidental and entertainment expenses upon a finding that such expenses are reasonable and necessary business expenses of Washoe County, and that there is sufficient budget appropriation within the applicable budget to fund that. And those are really the highlights of the changes, if you have any questions.
Okay, Vice Chair John, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Vladech, where does it say, because I see in the actual staff report that you're repealing certain sections, but I don't see those repealed sections. So you're repealing, we're no longer going to have a director of community relations. We're no longer going to have a director of management services. Is that correct?
That's correct. We no longer have those.
What, who, when was the director of management services put in this section?
I don't know when it was.
Because I don't see it in my staff report or in the actual ordinance.
In the staff report, we reference the 2017 reorganization that the board approved of the county manager's office. And we've been working with the District Attorney's Office, who provided this document.
Okay, and what's the employment and training department?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, please.
The employment and training department was, again, called out in code, and I don't know when, how long ago that was first placed in the code. That's evolved in our HR department, our human resources department. They now have a training division.
Okay.
But to call it out in code that way was, seemed to be.
Okay. And then telephone call logs?
Again, this is bringing this up to modern day, perhaps. The previous code required employees to keep a call log, and now with the digital formats that we have and the records that are available, that's what we would use for that purpose.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. I'll introduce this. Thank you very much. I just needed to clarify, I couldn't find the relevant. Not your fault, not my fault.
Introduced by, it was introduced by Commissioner John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Vladech. And now we will go to 16.
Okay, similarly.
Let me introduce that item.
Yeah, it needs to be introduced.
Item 16 is injection and first reading of an ordinance submitting Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code.
Madam Clerk.
This will be Bill Number 1815, an ordinance submitting Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code by repealing sections of the travel regulation ordinance relating to per diem expenses for travel advances and receipts for transportation by public conveyance, and by revising sections of the travel regulation ordinance related to the policy of the Board of County Commissioners related to travel by county officers and employees, registration fees for courses, seminars, conferences, and workshops, requests for permission to travel, travel accounts and special accounts, emergency travel, recruitment expenses, moving expenses, payment of travel expenses, transportation expenses, living expenses, local business expenses, legislative and lobbying expenses, advance payments, travel advances constituting a lien on a county officer or employee's accrued wages, filing travel claims, travel authorization for employees performing services in the outlying areas of Washoe County, department regulations concerning travel, use of county vehicles, use of private vehicles, travel and moving expenses upon an employee's transfer, prohibition of salary advances.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, okay.
So very similar to the previous item, this is a cleanup, bringing in modern-day travel practices and some clarifications. If you'd like, I can do the same and go through some highlights, or if you have questions.
I have some specific questions. So in this cleanup, a county officer or employee a county officer or employee, is a county officer, would that be fair to say that's elected department heads? Who's an officer and who's an employee?
Mr. Leparelli.
I have some other questions while he's looking. So, bottom line, can you tell me what the, or the manager, what are the major meaty parts that were changed here and how they affect, especially electeds, department heads, and especially the Board of County Commissioners when it comes to travel, lodging, what qualifies, what's the process, what is our budget line? How do we know what we have available as each Commissioner or elected department head? Or is it, do we, my question is, do we put that out into a budget, or do we do it as a request?
So, Madam Chair, if I could, specific to, I'll start specific with County Commissioners. There is a travel budget approved every year, I believe, it's either $15,000 or $20,000 the current year.
Per Commissioner or for the body?
For the body. And with, with, in your, I believe in your policies, your rules and policies, there's a discussion of, that's equally divided, with the exceptions of certain assignments to Boards and Commissions. And it, the practice has been that we track that in our office. We track the overall, we track individually. And as we get close to that budget, we start advising where we stand with our travel funds.
Do we have something in here that calls out that if a Commissioner is traveling, let's say on behalf of the RTC, or EDON, or Cherokee Meadows Flood, that those agencies pay for said trip? And how do you negotiate that?
Typically, they do. Typically, if you're traveling for, I'll just use RCVAs as an example. If you're traveling for a RCVA business, then RCVA covers that cost. There are times, there have been times when it's kind of a mutually beneficial, and we do, we do negotiate that. We negotiate between the two organizations of split it in half.
Okay. So, it's not formalized, but it is, what would you call it, naturalized?
A practice.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and you feel comfortable with, you have enough guidance there?
I do. I do.
Okay.
One of the other, to answer your question about kind of what's the meat of this, one of those relates to booking travel and how employees and how we all book our travel. The current ordinance requires the use of the travel agent, agency. This gives some flexibility related to that. Employees, the proposal is that employees, so long as travel has been approved, employees would have the ability to search online themselves to find travel.
Within a tight paradigm, which is no first class, no business, right?
Correct. All of those are covered in this, that you're traveling at the least expensive manner that you can.
Right.
Just as, and as a side note, we are also in the process now of an RFP for travel agents.
Do we need a travel agent, Mr. Manager? Because I know the state doesn't do that anymore. They all are their own travel agents. And I mean, I'm not saying they're correct or incorrect.
I think given the, what we're proposing is give the flexibility for that.
Because there are some employees that don't know how to look for travel.
There are, there are those. There are also, at times, there could be some travel that's a little more difficult to, you know...
Do yourself.
To spend time on doing yourself. So, giving us that flexibility, I think, is well...
I did ask for that. So, that's good. So, there's just more flexibility in this ordinance rather than the tight, would you say?
There is, within, again, within the parameter of being frugal with our travel.
Okay.
It's, there's still some guidelines
Right.
on, on looking for the best airfare, looking for the best travel prices.
Okay. Mr. Leparelli, do you have our officer versus employee definition?
Madam Chair, for Commissioner Jung, I'm not finding a definition of county officer that's specific to the provisions of this code section and chapter. So, I would, I would construe that to be a broad term, would, that would encompass elected, appointed...
I see board member, yeah, like Board of Health member.
It's, I guess it's distinct from the, from the term employee.
Got it.
But...
I'm fine with that. I will introduce Bill Number 1815. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, either Mr. Manager or Mr. Leparelli, the fact that the county reimburses us for the least expensive way to travel, the Conestoga wagon model, which is fine. But if we choose to upgrade and we pay for that ticket, there's, there's no consequence for that. Am I correct?
Again, that's kind of really covered in our practice, correct. The county will cover a, you know, again, that least expensive method. If then there's a desire to upgrade, that would be borne by the, by the individual, that difference.
Perfect. I, well, I just want to make sure that in this, in this update, and I didn't see it, but, you know, sometimes I miss things in reading, and I, like Commissioner Jung, I feel the same way. This is a, it's a black line. It's not a red line where your attention is not drawn to some of this stuff. That, that we wouldn't be just, you know, precluded and say, you know, if you decide that you're going to travel, you know, business class, especially on a long trip, and you're willing to pay the addition, that there's no penalty. That's, that's my only question. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could, something that I had always wished we had, which, once this is, once, if and when this ordinance, new ordinance is updated, one of the things that we've discussed is to produce, in my terms, a travel handbook or travel guidelines, so that you don't have to read the ordinance. You can actually look in a little, little easier language of, here are the parameters, the guidelines for travel, and what is covered, what's not covered, the things to look out for, sort of, sort of a document.
Okay. I'll introduce it now, Madam Chairwoman?
Can I make just one addition?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Just one clarification, just for the record. On page 16 of the red line, Section 5.364 talks about local business expenses, and it allows for reimbursement for parking expenses. So, if an employee or an officer has to pay for parking, they don't have to go through the full travel approval process, but they could submit that for petty cash. And it says, "And must submit the form to the Treasurer's Office. It should be the Comptroller's." So, we'll make that correction. It's not the Treasurer in that case.
Okay, we have an introduction, and I see no public comment. So, we will move on to item 14. Mr. Manager, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 14 is discussion possible approval of amendments to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners' Rules and Procedure Handbook adopted March 28, 2017. You should have a couple of things. One, staff has been keeping track of some of our practices again. And so, you should have a document that reads, "Adopted," and it has struck through March 28, 2017, says December XX, 2018. And there are the strike-throughs, black and white strike-throughs in my, in my copy, primarily on the Order of Business on page 3 of that document, to note, again, what has become our practice, placing those into your policies and procedures. There is also discussion on the request of staff, which is on page 1, and the discussion that we've had regarding two-hour rule versus priorities is discussed there, for your, for your consideration. I believe those are the changes that staff had.
Most of this is just cleanup, I believe. So, I know that there are two other changes. Commissioner Herman, would you like to point out the section that you, that you want to change in? Because I'm not sure what section that is.
It's on page 1, and it's Article 4.
Page, Article 4. All right.
And if I could, if I may, if I could just, could discuss that a little bit. The, the, the issue of our Parliamentary Procedure Manual, back when this was, in 2017, when this was adopted, staff had advised to change to Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure from Roberts' Rules of Parliamentary Procedure. The discussion at the time was, Mason's Manual is devised as a manual for legislative bodies. Roberts' Rules is more typically used for nonprofits. Discussions I've had with Commissioner Herman, the times that I've, in my, in my time with Washoe County, that I've seen where we say, "I don't know what to do here. Let's turn to our parliamentary procedure." I've not seen that. So, so, it really kind of, to me, comes down to what are we most comfortable with in using.
I can't see that it makes any difference, one way or the other. Certainly, Vice Chair Jung.
Think that that would be the, sort of the purview of the Chair and the Vice Chair? Like, how they best feel that the group is being heard? I think, because I think we sort of stick to Roberts, and we sort of sit to Mason, but if Commissioner Herman doesn't feel like it's effective for her, then maybe that's a one-off. I mean, I don't know if this has to be put into a policy, because, first of all, there's not a single one up here that's an expert at either of those rules. I can say that for, yeah, and like, for the small amount of time that the County Manager has been in local government, which is, I'm being facetious, I've never seen it either. People say, you know, point of order. I have said before, there's a motion and a second call for the vote many times. But can you explain to me why this is an issue, Commissioner Herman?
It's, it's the public that has brought this to my attention, and so that's why I brought it to our attention. And they, they feel more comfortable, and they, some of them are very well-versed in both. So, they would feel much more at home with Roberts, and that's why I brought it before us.
Mr. Leparelli?
Madam Chair, just a procedural comment. Mr. Slaughter was, was referring to a, a red-line version of the rules. And that's handy, but it's not part of what was on the Board's published materials. So, I would construe that to mean that you're not limited to changing just the things that are on the black line. You can talk about any one of these articles. I don't know if Commissioner Herman's suggestion about Roberts versus Masons was part of the red line or not. But the point is, it was agendized to discuss any change in any rule that you have, and your rules were appended to the, to the item. Now, as it relates to Roberts and Masons, I likewise have rarely been called upon to be the parliamentarian, and that's, that's dandy for all of you, because my expertise in Roberts and Masons is not great. The point of it all is, though, is that you have a set of rules to govern the Board's proceedings when, when it gets into a sticky situation. If there's disagreement on the Board, if there's, if there's misbehavior, if there's, if there, if order is lacking in the room, if there are questions about procedural things and priorities, that you have some set of rules that govern what you do. It can be Roberts, which, as the, as the manager said, is more typically civic organizations, nonprofits, things like that go with Roberts. Masons is specifically designed for legislators, legislatures. I think there are almost 75% of the legislatures in the country use Masons. This Board is a legislative Board. You do have a legislative role. But you also sometimes have a quasi-judicial role, and you sometimes have a, you know, have an executive branch role. So, it's not fair to say that you need Masons because you're a legislative body, because you're also all those other things. It comes down to, I think, a choice of what set of rules works best. It could be Roberts, Masons. There are others, too. There's one called Sturgis. There's, there are lots of them. And the main point is that you know what they are, and everybody can, can fall back on them when it's necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Leparelli, Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roberts' Rules are, there's, the, the rules themselves are simply, there's a smaller set of rules. And I mean, I have to be very honest with you. We've never, in the time that I've been on this Board, which is now about six years, we've never fallen back on them. For me, this is not a hill to die on. And, you know, and I'm happy to reverse back to, we had Roberts' Rules forever. And I personally don't think that it's an issue. I have, I have some issues on some other things, but we'll save those for the next conversation.
Okay. Commissioner Lucy?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, and I, I have a tendency to agree with Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Hartong. I don't see a true separation from one other, one, one set of rules to the other. And I have, I'm finding a difficulty finding, you know, realistically, as the District Attorney pointed out, you know, it's more of a code of conduct that we need to contribute, really abide by here, because we do work in so many different formats as it pertains to many different issues that we reel with. Because we do have to deal with other elected officers that may make Mason's Rule a little bit more conducive for dealing with legislative issues. However, when we, when we're dealing with more civil issues, such as planning and governance and stuff like that, Roberts could be very, so it really, to me, is more of a code of conduct. But like, I, I, it's not a hill for me to die on. So, one way or the other, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Mr. Leparelli, did you have something else?
No, I, that was earlier.
Okay, then, could, could we erase, Commissioner Hartong, do you have something else?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're not getting, I'm not getting erasing, that's why. All right. All right, Commissioner Hartong?
Item 5.6, so, staff is recommending, this wasn't, I don't think that this was a Board initiative. This is something that staff has recommended. So, now we're going to eliminate the two-hour rule, which we instituted on ourselves, which I think is good. While I recognize staff's desire to identify three priority items, what happens is, is when you identify a fourth, something has to come off. And I've already expressed my displeasure to staff on this, and I see it, I see it as listed as a red line here. I'm not comfortable with 5.6. I think we need much more discussion on how that would occur. I like the two-hour rule. I think that that's, that's an important, we could, we could even reduce it if, if staff is concerned with the amount of time that they have to spend, which is, they're supposed to spend time on things that we give them direction on. That's what they do. That's, that's their job. I'm sorry. But, you know, if there's a, if there seems to be too much of a quagmire, perhaps we take it to a one-hour rule, or something of that nature. But this, the idea that, that each Board member gets a, gets three priorities, I mean, I could name three priorities that are important off the top of my head, and, and any time you ask for something more, then they go, "Well, we need to knock one of your priorities off." And I'm uncomfortable with that. So, if I need stop signs somewhere, and one of my, one of my other priorities gets knocked off, and my stop signs don't get attended to. And so, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this. I will be very, very straight and very, very candid. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chair Jung?
I, I have some concerns about this, too, because it's like the staff gets to choose what they want to work on, and never brings it to the other Commissioners, because maybe I don't want staff to be spending all that time on something that I can't make any sense, that it does fit the community or strategic goals. So, it doesn't even give us a poll over for each other if we're getting way out of our goals, roles, and expansions. And it really shouldn't be staff's job to say, "No, you can't do that. That should come back to us," and say... And I think the onus on the manager isn't fair either, because this person, whether it's John Slaughter or anybody in the future, has to put it on the agenda, basically saying, "I don't agree with where this person is going." Instead, I liked it when we initiated the agenda item. We got to argue about it up here. We've told people, "No," on several of their projects, because we couldn't figure out the scope and value. And then on the flip side, being staff in the past, I think it's important that when staff sits down to look at our RIC, is it called RIC? Okay. That, what, what you're driving at here, Mr. Manager, is, "Please tell me your top three this month." It doesn't say that we took any of them off. I've never had my staff taken... I've never had my stuff taken off. I just identified, where do you want me to start working, considering that there's only so many hours in one day, and there's five commissioners who, hopefully with a good chair, is keeping us all going in the same direction, but that's still hard to do, as we've learned with elected department heads. How much authority do we even have with each other to say, "No, you're not going to work on this," or "Yes, you are?" So, this is not a criticism for staff or for the board. I think this could be written in a way that isn't misconstrued by others. And let me say one more thing, too. So, in practice, I think you've been doing it perfectly. I think staff has been doing it perfectly in practice. But here's the trouble, when it's codified, who knows who's coming next? Who could say, "No, this is what you guys agreed to," which of course then we could bring back and say, "No, we've done that." But I think this needs more work before, I, too, would agree with that, but I do want to go to item 6.2, Order of Business, and I want to applaud staff for putting this and codifying this, because let me tell you something. I think what is the most important thing that always hurt my feelings for others, who come here for an honor, an award, to give good information that we can't get out, even if it's through our terrific communications team, through all of the, you know, we have Twitter, we have all the social media, plus we have television. I think it's very important that before we do public comment, that we recognize employees, we do presentations, and then we do public comment, because otherwise, we'd have, we have full houses, and sometimes we've had people sit here that we were honoring, in quotations, that sat here for three hours, who have business to do. So, Mr. Manager, I completely support this. I love this. I think this is in accordance with the way a public business body should run, and I know where you're going with item 5.6 request of staff, but I, too, have the concerns that Commissioner Hartung does, and I don't think that's the way you mean it, and that's not the way I've been treated in the RIC meetings, ever. I've even thrown more priorities up, and of course, they'd have to push back and go, "So where does that fit with all 55 things you have up here?" And I love that, because it helps me focus, and some things that sat up there were, and many times, to be perfectly honest, reminders to myself, where I would say, Ms. Marshall knows this, "Take that one off, I've already taken care of it, don't need to talk about this anymore." So, I think if we just came back with a little bit less direct language, I think Commissioner Herman has something to say as well, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, I.
I think that we could get to yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
Are you there? Yep. Okay. So, seems to me like the easiest way would be to limit us to three a month, like you were suggesting, but to have each month, you prioritize all of the ones that you have, so that they're only working on three, maybe, but, I mean, that could work.
So, Madam Chair, if I could supplement.
Commissioner Lucy.
Yes, thank you. And I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with the other commissioners. I feel that what we've been doing, and what staff's been doing in regards to prioritizing certain initiatives, have been fantastic, and I have, you know, I meet with staff once a month to prioritize and clear out what's the dead wood, so to speak, and move on with the good stuff. I also, I, but I do, I still do appreciate we have the two-hour rule in there. That to kind of, kind of, it kind of keeps us all in line. It kind of measures, as a board, that we're here, so that if items, and maybe by recommendation of staff, saying, "Hey, look, this was a recommendation by a commissioner, bring it back for future more discussion. This is going to take more than two hours staff time. Is this still something the board really wants to address?" And I think so that, so it's not one or the other, it's both. Can we have both? Can we somehow coexist with both rules, that we have three priorities, monthly priorities, or however we deem those priorities fit, but at the same time, if we want to add something more, or something somehow subsequent, that we come to the board and ask for a two-hour rule approval, so that this board knows. Well, those 15 priorities, because out of five commissioners with three priorities, that's 15 different things that we have staff working on at any given time. That's a significant amount of projects in regards to not only conducting their own average daily business, that's significant. So I think 15 is a good amount of priorities, but if there are subsequent priorities that need to come up and/or be addressed in some sort of a timely manner, that it comes to the board for further discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Hartung.
And I think Commissioner Lucy has hit on it. Two-hour rules, it can create a board initiative, and that, and I think, I think that's where you kind of climb on board with other commissioners and initiatives, and you realize that, you know, some of the issues that are occurring in District Four are actually occurring in Five and Two as well. And so I, I'm just a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with the way that this is worded, but I would like to draw the board's attention to Article 11, 11.2 specifically. The last, second to last sentence says, "Failure of the county commission to follow any of these rules shall be considered a commission decision to waive such rule. No such, no notice of such waiver need be given." So basically what we're doing, I mean, that's a very open-ended statement. We can break our own rules at any time, just by giving board direction.
Mr. Manager.
Two, I guess, two items. I hear the discussion on the two-hour rule. I guess what I would suggest is maybe we pull back, leave what we have in there now. Staff will go reworked out. We review these periodically, so we will rework that. And the last comment from Commissioner Hartung, again, goes to really the use of these policies and procedures. Statute, as counsel will tell us, you know, we follow statute first, we follow county ordinance, and then we have these rules and procedures as guidelines, and the guidelines cannot be in conflict with either ordinance or statute, obviously.
So, Mr. Leparelli, so what I'm, what I'm reading here is that at any time, we can, without given notice, no such, no notice of such waiver need be given. We can suspend at a moment's notice our rules and procedures and decide that we're going to do something a different way. Did I, am I reading that correctly?
Madam Chair, this collection of rules is like any other set of laws. It's kind of cobbled together from various sources. There's another section in the rules that says the rules can be suspended at any time, but you have to have an agendized item to suspend the rules. So that rule that requires that you suspend the rules is inconsistent with
It's contradictory.
With the waiver rule that says you can, if you choose not to follow them, it's deemed a waiver of the rules. So, as the manager pointed out, we're definitely constrained by state law, both prohibitions and mandates. We're definitely constrained by the validly enacted ordinances that the board passes. These rules are a looser set of guidelines, I guess would be fair to say, but it's best if they can be as clear as possible, so people understand what is going to be guiding the board's decisions and activities.
I, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Commissioner Hartung.
Well, and I, and I read, I read the beginning policy, and then as I, as I read through each one of the policies, and I got to 11.2 and that final statement, it gave me cause for pause, because it does seem as if we have some conflicting issues there. So I, you know, my sense is, is that, that's another one, Mr. Manager, that we need to
Look at?
Yeah, we need to come back and potentially have some updated language and some clarity.
And Madam Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Lucy.
You know, I think, and I think, I think it's prudent that we have this discussion, because we keep having this discussion about, we are mandated by NRS, we are, it is clearly outlined, you know, we're not like the cities that have a city charter. We're very much identified by the legislature and how we conduct ourselves, as every county does within this community. These are just basically our, so to speak, guidelines, or codes of conduct, so to speak, but really not our, and I think we should step away, and I know Mr. Leparelli says laws, but they're really not our laws. They're not, they're not truly enforceable, because the only enforceable law is NRS, and that is really what we have to allow ourselves to be guided by. These are just our guidelines in which we choose to act as a board, you know, and this could take me into my, probably, my discussion, and on 7.1, the election of officers, you know, it says, "County commissioners shall elect one of their members to be chair of the board," and all these, and whatnot. That is already, that, these things are already outlined in NRS in these discussions, and they're not, and I don't want to get into a spot where we're getting ourselves in a predicament with LCB and with, you know, with different challenges, as it pertains to our guidelines and mandating future boards based upon a guideline book. So, it's a really kind of challenging area where we go, and I don't know if we've overstepped our bounds, because as you say in the staff report, this was inducted, this was something that was introduced in 2012 as rules and procedures, but I mean, prior to that, there wasn't, I mean, there was, was there, were there guidelines prior to this, prior to 2012? And what were those guidelines? And what did that look like?
Madam Chair, I guess maybe as one of the historians here, there were, there were separate documents, there were several different documents, so in 2012, we started pulling those all together into one document.
So, thank you, Mr. Manager. So I have to also comment on 7.1. I did some research on my own and took the opportunity to talk to a Legislative Council Bureau attorney who happens to be a friend of mine, as well as a attorney in the city of Reno, who's a friend of mine, who practices municipal law, and they both said that the language in 7.1, beginning with it, is the intent of the board that the vice chair sends to the chair, is, we are actually probably butting right up against breaking the law there, because we, we do have rules and procedures that, both from our, in our policy, which is policy, Article III policy, as well as the state statutes, that do not allow us to bind a future board, and that language actually considers binding a future board. And I know I voted to put it on there. I talked to Mr. Leparelli about it. I wasn't all too comfortable with the response I got, and I did tell Mr. Leparelli that I was going to go talk to someone else. I did. I talked to a Legislative Council Bureau attorney, who said, "We probably are leaning over the line here of being on the wrong side of the law, and we should remove everything from the first sentence out of this document entirely."
And Madam Chair, if I may really.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Lucy.
You know, and I, and I would, that's why I would, one of the questions that I would have is that, you know, that's when, when NRS has it clearly, it's already clearly outlined and realized on how we run administratively here at the board. I think that's where the governing document, anything else in regards to commissioner travel stuff that's not outlined in NRS, that's what should be put in the guidelines, that's what should be put in the handbook, not, not stuff that's already pre-described in NRS on how the county commission should be operated.
Mr. Leparelli.
Madam Chair, there was a time earlier in my career where I may have, I may have been threatened or insulted by the idea that
You should be.
That lawyer, that commissioners talk to other lawyers, but I know the reality is, the commissioners are out in the community, talking to all sorts of people, and lots of people have viewpoints and opinions, and I do recall our conversation, and you can reveal those things. I can't, I have to follow the privilege. You can talk about those things. But I would just add that Section 7.1 is, I guess I would defend it by saying it's aspirational. It says it's the intent of the board, but the board isn't bound. So, so if, if, if your lawyer friend was thinking that this is a sort of an illegal provision, I would, I would defend it by saying, if the board decided not to elect the vice chair as chair, that wouldn't be a violation of the rule, it would be a different expression of the board's more modern intent. This, this says that it was the intent, and that doesn't say shall, or must, or whatever. So, I guess, I don't, I don't want to seem defensive, like I have a pride of authorship in these rules, because I don't, but if I was made to defend what they say, I would say, it says intent, not, not.
Yeah, and I did explain, I actually took the document I had with me, and it actually came up because of, through another conversation, and then I said, "Well, we have this, this in our rules." And he said, "Well, you know, you're probably pushing the envelope, so bring it to me and let me see it." And I, when I showed it to him, he said, "It does say intent," and yeah, he agreed with that, but he said, "It is probably, it is, it could be challenged legally, and if it were challenged by someone in the public legally, or someone who sits on this board legally," he did not believe that we could meet that challenge, that we would then be asked by the court to simply remove it. That was the assessment that I got. So, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, and I agree with Madam Chair. I think, just leave the first sentence, "The county commissioner, county commissioner shall elect one of their members as chair of the board, and another as vice chair of the board, both to serve one-year term," and I think, I think that's the, that's the best language. I'm in agreement with Madam Chair.
Vice Chair John.
Yep, if, I recall, Mr. Leparelli, we asked you, I brought to you an LCB interpretation of marijuana lounges, and you told me that the DA supersedes that, so I would like a district attorney formal opinion on this in writing, and I do remember the intent of this was so that business owners, lobbyists, management, staff would have a seamless tradition of chair, vice chair to chair, like all boards and commissions are supposed to manage, and that it was in concern of others in the past, always serving as vice chair, never ascending to chair. So, I think you're kind of forgetting the history and the intent of this, but if, but I do want, before this has ever changed, I do want a legal opinion from our lawyer who informs us. Thank you.
So, I'm not forgetting the intent of it, you'll remember that I voted in favor of it, but the, the point was, is that we are not like other boards and commissions, we are an elected body, and the, apparently the language, at least in the opinion of the Legislative Council Bureau, the language in the state statutes applies to elected boards that says, you can't set, you can't impose your, no board can impose something on a future board. And so I said, "Well, we all got, what if we all get reelected?" It's still considered a future board by the opinion of the Legislative Council Bureau. I, that's, I'm just putting it out there, that's the way it is, that's the opinion I got, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, and I think, you know, and there's a lot of challenges in here. I mean, we've looked at these rules and, I mean, as Commissioner Hartung pointed out in 11.2, no, you know, failure of the county commission to follow these rules. I mean, so we have some contradictory statements in here that really make this, the whole, the whole, you know, whole thing, a little bit challenged, in the sense of what rules do we follow, what do we not follow? And I would really go back to that. If it's already outlined and guided within NRS, that's where that should be, and anything that's not pertaining to NRS, that's outside of the scope of NRS, that has to do with this board, as it pertain to work, then that should be within this, because it really is a code of conduct, a guideline for this board to, as to the way we conduct business here at the commission, not as to supersede what law has already been drafted.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Well, I think we've had a very robust discussion on this, and now I would like, do we have any public comment? I see none listed on my, I see no public, as a matter of fact. So I'm taking it, we have no public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board, and I am looking for a decision from the commissioners on what we do.
So, Madam Chair, so we're going to
Commissioner Hartung.
We're going to leave item 5.6. We're not going to use the redline version. Am I correct in that?
Works for me.
No, I think we've asked for staff to come back.
Well, for now, it's staying in, it's staying in for now, is what, is what's happened, is what I, is what I took. I have no issue with 6.2. I agree with Madam Chair on 7.1. I think we should remove or deal with 11.2. Those are, those are my recommendations.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
Madam Chair, if I could ask for a clarification on 11.2, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could clarify what you meant by deal with that.
Well, I mean, I mean, we've, we've, we've got a, we've got an issue in here that it says that failure on the county commission to follow any of these rules shall be considered a commission decision to waive such rule. So, I mean, I'm okay with leaving it in there, but what it does is, at any time, it gives us the ability to suspend the rules, and, and then I think, and I have to read real quickly, I believe that it, that in the, I think that I read, and sadly, I did not highlight it.
In 7.2, a suspension of rules, that any rule may be suspended at any time
7.2, thank you.
With a simple majority vote of the board. ...with a simple majority vote of the board.
But does that mean we have to notice it duly noticed? So, in 7.2, it says duly noticed. In 11.2, it basically says...
Without notice.
...that we can, that we can, I just would like the language consistent.
Agreed.
Yeah, and it doesn't appear to be consistent. Mr. Liparelli.
Madam Chair, I think the waiver language in 11.2 was put in there to guard against the possibility that, that someone could cite these rules as a, as, as legal authority, and that they would, would obtain some greater status, legal status than they actually have. So by saying, if at any time the board decides to, to not follow its rules, that it's considered a waiver, here's an example. Mason's rules that, that are contemplated by this, by this existing set of rules, don't require a second to a motion. And it's because in the legislative body, each, each elected legislator has a right to introduce a bill without needing the, the concurrence of any other member. So in Mason's rules, they don't, they don't require a second. Well, the board's practice is always to, to get a second. And so that might be the kind of thing that fits into the waiver provision, that just because the board doesn't follow it to the, to the letter, doesn't, doesn't give rise to some sort of standing to make a legal challenge to, to the board's practice. So, there may be some value in leaving 11.2 in, is what I'm saying. It may protect the board when it, when it technically doesn't follow its own rules. The other, there is another example in here, the order of business. If during a meeting you wanted to take those items out of order, you're essentially waiving what your rules say you're going to do at that particular moment. And that's an example of why the waiver rule might be something you want to preserve.
Which we do routinely. Commissioner Hartung.
And I, I'm not disagreeing, Mr. Liparelli. How do you rectify the conflict with 7.2?
Well, 7.2 is something you might want to look at, at revising, because it, but it, because it is inconsistent with 11.2.
Okay.
Or, or, or 7.1. We're scratching, or, you know, my suggestion would be just scratching 7.2, because here's, again, if we're going to have two separate ways of doing waivers within the, within the rules, you know, and going back to what Mr. Liparelli, I'm still confused as whether, what is this governing? What, I mean, is this just a guideline? Because if it's just a waiver, and we can wipe it at any time, not abide to, by any of these rules based upon the waiver within 11.2, once again, it's merely a guideline and not really a true rulebook or a law, so to speak, that we have to conduct by at any time. So if one time we don't feel Mason's rules are conducive to the type of meeting, we could suspend that rule and operate under Roberts rules for that, based upon the discussion that is outlined within 11.2, saying that we, no notice, no notice of such waiver needs to be given, and that the failure of county commission to follow any of these rules should be considered a commission decision. And so with that being said, so once again, merely a guideline. So if this is really just a guideline, at any time, we can just change anything. And so I, if we're going to do that and keep 11.2 in for protection of this body, I say we scratch 7.2 and take 7.2 completely out and for a rule, so suspension of tools, because they're contradictory to what they're trying to accomplish.
Maker of the motion would agree with that and amend the motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't want to intrude on the discussion, but there's now been so much discussion that I don't think the clerk is clear on the motion.
Okay.
So, when you're ready, maybe we could start over.
Mr. Manager.
And I understand a motion, a new motion may be coming. I just wanted to remind the board of the discussion, and I haven't heard a decision on Article Four, Parliamentary Authority.
Right. I was just going to remind the maker of the motion of that.
Article, which one?
For Roberts, Mason's Rules versus...
Oh, yes, 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 yes. My bad. My bad.
Okay. So, would the maker of the motion like to restate a motion?
I would. So, we'll amend Article Four of Parliamentary Authority to read Roberts' Rules instead of Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure. Suspend 5.6 for now leaving the language the same with the two-hour rule until staff can come back to us at such a time that we're comfortable with that. I like the red lines in 6.2, so I would, the motion to include 6.2. The, the change in Article Seven to eliminate the intent from that point forward down, so that it would only read, "The county commissioner shall elect one of its members as chair of the board, and another of their members as vice chair of the board, both to serve one year term." And eliminate completely Article 7.2. And I think that's everything.
Mr. Liparelli.
I'll wait for you to get a second, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second now. Mr. Liparelli.
Just again, so that the public is clear on it, the published documents on the county's website don't have redlining. They're just the clean version of what you may have seen as a red line. So when Commissioner Hartung's motion about 6.2 says he likes the red lines, for the public's sake, it will be the version of point, 6.2 that is in the published agenda, which has salute to the flag, roll call, employee recognition, appearances, public comment, commissioner comment, proclamation. That, that litany appears in the published agenda in that order.
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Chair John.
In discussion, I still want the DA's opinion on the LCB and private attorney's opinions that's informing this vote. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote up above. Motion carries five nothing with all commissioners voting. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, I am, I believe we are at item 18, which is our closed labor session that is not needed today.
Mm-hmm.
Then brings us to item 19, which is public comment.
Okay, I see no public comment. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. And, Mr. Manager.
Item 20, which is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics of future agendas.
Do you have anything?
I have two, I have one announcement related to upcoming meetings...
Okay.
...for the, for the board, but really for the public's benefit. Remind everyone of the January 7th County Commission meeting, which will be the swearing in of all of our newly elected and returning elected county officials. We will also include in that swearing-in ceremony many of our GID members who may choose to use that ceremony to do their swearing-in. And then, on January 22nd, that is a regularly scheduled meeting. That meeting will now be used as a board workshop, a strategic planning workshop. Location to be determined. All of the announced, public announcements and notifications of that will be coming, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. That's a normal meeting date, but we will be meeting in a different location to be determined for the purpose of a strategic planning workshop.
Okay. Commissioner Herman.
22nd. I'm sorry.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said I wanted to... I'm still making, there it is. Merry Christmas.
Oh, thank you. And a Happy New Year. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Manager, we have the swearing-in on the 7th. My calendar contains a regular BCC meeting on the 8th, so we'll...
That is correct. The, the, January 7th meeting is a statutorily required meeting.
Understood.
And we will conduct only the swearing-in. There will be, it will be a commission meeting, so there will be public comment period during that meeting, but just the swearing-in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
What day was the workshop?
Commissioner Lucy.
22nd.
Okay. Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along with Commissioner Herman, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Have, hope you, everyone has a wonderful holiday. And for all those paying attention, don't be naughty. I'll be sitting on your chair. I'm going to go sit on everybody's shelf and looking, and I'll be reporting back to Santa Claus if you've been naughty. All of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other comments, with that, we are adjourned.